Welcome everyone to the Board of Education meeting for Wednesday, December 14. The Board has been in executive session since 5 o'clock to discuss negotiations, matters of employment, history of particular persons, potential litigation, matters made exempt under federal law, FERPA, and to receive advice from council, subject to Board approval. May I have a motion to reopen the public meeting at 7:41?
I move.
Can I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
If everyone could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, I would love our Seven Bridges students who will be presenting tonight to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, welcome everyone. This is our last meeting before the holiday break, so I did want to start off by taking an opportunity to wish everyone here and all of our faculty, staff, students, and families a very happy and healthy holiday season. I hope you all take this time to relax and recharge and enjoy special moments with family and friends. I know that COVID is still with us, but unlike last December or December of 2020, it is not preventing most of us from gathering this year, and gathering is important and life-affirming, and so I hope all of you will take the time to gather in your own way and celebrate anything that can be celebrated between now and when we meet again after the New Year. We have not had a regularly scheduled Board meeting since the bond vote on November 29, and I just wanted to thank all of the community members who came out to vote and to make their votes heard and their voices heard. We are very thankful that our, that bond proposition number one passed, and there is a resolution in tonight's president report. We will be taking a roll call later this evening to vote on it shortly, which will allow us to officially move forward with the repairs and improvements and upgrades allocated for in proposition number one. As for proposition number two, we are also glad that the community spoke and told us that they did not at this time support funding, creating a bond and funding a single point of entry at the high school. We have always known that retrofitting Greeley's open campus to create a single point of entry would be a complex and costly undertaking, but based on information that we had gathered both pre and post-COVID from our safety audits and community surveys, we felt that it was an option that we needed to present to the community. The community has spoken, but as we have stated previously, this does not end the conversation as to how we can continue to make Greeley and all of our campuses as safe as possible. We will continue to update the community on all safety and security measures that we will be taking to the best of our ability. In, we have to not do everything so that we do not compromise and reveal information that could compromise the safety of our students and staff. I will note that we have another upcoming meeting after the New Year with our district emergency response team and our local first responders to discuss safety measures and preparedness at Greeley and all of our schools. I also want to mention that on Monday, we had another meeting of our strategic planning committee. The district generally reevaluates its strategic plan every five years in order to review the district's mission, values, and goals for student learning and to ensure that our curriculum and programming aligns with and supports what we wish to achieve. These meetings will continue after the New Year and throughout the spring of 2023, and we will be seeking community input through a thought exchange, more on that later, in order to help us refine and delineate and structure our goals for our students and our district over the next five years. I know that there will be updates from Dr. Ackerman on a number of items in the superintendent's report, so I won't reiterate those here. I know we'll have some updates during our committee reports as well concerning recent meetings that we've had, so I am going to turn everything over to Dr. Ackerman after we do this bond resolution. And I think we will start with our seven persons presentation, and then you will do the superintendent's report, correct?
That's correct.
So, on to item 1.1.1, under the president's report. This is a resolution which, as I stated earlier, allows us to move forward with the bond proposal, proposal number one, that allows us to fund upgrades and repairs, et cetera, to all of our facilities. So we need to take a roll call. Can I take, first have a motion for item 1.1.1, the bond resolution? Can I have a second? Any questions, comments, or discussions?
Do we have to read this out?
Lisa, do we need to read this out in its entirety? No. Yes, it's just, basically what it does is it sets forth what, what the proposition states, what we, how we will obtain our funding, what the funds will be used for. It allows us to get bonds to fund the expenditures, and it authorizes us to follow all applicable state laws in terms of everything that we do with those funds.
That's great.
Yeah, okay. Sure, that's fine. So Lisa, do you, do you want to go ahead with the roll call vote? Aye.
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 Motion passed, so the motion is passed. Thank you, everyone, and I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Ackerman.
All right, so we're in Seven Bridges because tonight we are luckily enough to be spending our evening with our students in the middle school, and I'd like to ask Dr. Mazza to come up to begin our presentation. I also know we'll be moving at some point here to the STEAM lab, which we're really excited to do, so Dr. Mazza, if you could please take over for us, we'd appreciate it.
Well, thank you for having us. Nice to see all of you here at Seven Bridges. Last week we had our first concert in three years. Making the Greeley over here to see some of the things that are so important, and they're really excited to have next door, so they might not give anything to you. Of course, we want to just kind of lay the groundwork, just want to lay the groundwork on student agency here at Seven Bridges Middle School. Last year, we shared with you the television studio that was funded by the CSF, and really, I think you walked away feeling like, wow, those kids are doing that, and the adults are kind of just standing back and watching, guiding, coaching, and that really was student agency in motion. This year, we would like to share with you how we're looking at STEAM across our entire building, with our STEAM center being the catalyst for a lot of that work. So a quick history lesson. All right, so here's our question, right? How would we develop student agency through STEAM? Learning through activities that are meaningful and relevant to our learners, right? Leveraging their voice, initiating teachers, but building upon relationships with our students. And this is my favorite definition. Student agency empowers learners so that their minds and hearts become engines that drive the learning. And I want you to think about that statement as you walk through our gallery walk tonight. You're going to see not just students standing by projects, you're going to actually see them doing and making and thinking and failing forward. That's a really big part of our work tonight. There's a lot of folks that are either watching on or either, you know, in the audiences, in graders, families, and students up here that might not know where this all came from. I remember during my hiring process, one of the biggest draws to this district and to this school was that we had just built this gigantic STEAM center in our school, and it hadn't even launched yet. And as a geek myself and someone that probably would have spent a lot of time in the STEAM center as a middle schooler, that was really exciting for me to take on as not only an adult, but a learner. David, I don't know if you can help me, I'm feeling real bad with this clicker. Just get us to that slide where you see the maps. There we go. Okay, so original floor plans, iteration one with the STEAM center, and we've evolved that space since. So as you walk through there, those board members and community members that first saw the layout and all those different things that came with that, it looks similar. I think there's a lot of things are the same, but there's also things that have evolved, and you're going to see some of those things, for example, sustainability. You'll see some greenscreen, some things that weren't originally planned but have evolved as students have used the space. Next slide. So again, 2016, 17, we have a bond approved, STEAM centers, Bell, Seven Bridges, I don't know if that was the high school too on that one, but lots of blueprints, you know, had this work. And, you know, I believe the end result was students making, building, thinking, having thinking spaces, but also using heavy machinery, and not just for the high schoolers, but at the middle school level. We opened, we have the construction. I arrived here in 2018, 19. We were utilizing it briefly. We had a couple people that were into, I know that Ms. Pizzuto, our teacher, you know, she was one of the original users in there, and, you know, it kind of spread from there. We have, in September 19th, we have a .5 STEAM and math enrichment teacher that was shared with Bell, and we were able to start to get teachers down there to really experiment and try to utilize some of the things without the heavy machinery that they were trained in to be able to utilize some of these spaces. Teachers signed up, worked alongside that teacher for projects. They could come, you know, middle of the day, end of the day, beginning of the day. We had some faculty meetings down there to expose our teachers to the space, and then COVID happened, right? And like everything else, we shifted, and the work was shifting to digital because a lot of the things that we were used to doing and touching and supplies, as all of us know, kind of went to the side until we could get to a better place health-wise, which forwards us to fall of 2020 when we hired our STEAM teacher. And I'm going to hand off the presentation to Ms. Geras this moment.
Hi, everyone. So I started here, this is my third year. I started in the fall of 2020, right at the beginning of pandemic education, everyone's favorite, two words. When I started, the STEAM center was being used for classroom space. So the machines were shelved, most of the supplies were locked away in cabinets because kids needed to be six feet apart at desks. My role was really as a pod teacher, so I was subbing most of the day, really, so I wasn't really spending a lot of time down there. The silver lining of all that for me was that I got to build relationships with the teachers here and with the students here. I got to understand the culture of the building and really understand what the interests, the strengths, and the challenges of our students and staff were. So that helped me as the regulations started to loosen a little bit, and then we moved to three feet. That made me, or helped me to realize what was possible. So we did start using the space as it was intended, more in like mid-winter to early spring of 2020, 2021. The next year, which was last year, the space opened up again, and I got to jump into the role. But it was all completely new for me. It was a new schedule, I, you know, I only knew the pandemic schedule, so understanding the true workings of the school was, you know, part of what I had to overcome in order to really understand what the role that I would play was and what our STEAM program really could be. So one of the nice things is I got to teach a fifth grade design course, which, you know, allowed me to get to know all of our fifth graders and then build along with those kids as they aged up through sixth and seventh grade now. So...
David, move this slide, please.
Oh, no, don't, actually, please. Sorry, thanks. Sorry, still on this slide. So anyway, last year, I was really trying to feel out the role. I was also doing a lot of math enrichment last year, so that sort of limited the time that I could spend doing STEAM projects, but it also gave me an opportunity to get to know all of the kids in five through eight through the math work. So, you know, I feel like it's been sort of a balancing act, and then this year, I feel like the STEAM center is open at full capacity. Last year, I, some of you know, I dove headfirst into carpentry, which is now my favorite free time activity, but now we're using all of the space, all of the machines, and what you'll see tonight from these amazing kids is that the STEAM center is a space for kids to really explore their own interests, you know, develop an idea and see it through to completion from its inception through the entire design process. And one of the great things that I think we have going on this year is that we have STEAM drop-in time, so during homeroom, during lunch periods, and after school most days of the week, kids can come to work on passion projects, or they can work on projects that they started in other classes. So the STEAM program is accessible to everyone, not only through their classes and through the design art class and through math enrichment, but also through independent drop-in time. So the other thing I want to point out is that the tech program here, which is grade six through eight with Chris Tassi, we've been, we've done a lot of vertical alignment to make sure that when the fifth graders leave, leave the design art class, they're prepared for what they're going to have in their sixth, seventh, and eighth grade tech classes. So you'll see some of that tonight. It's things as basic as, you know, learning how to use a hot glue gun properly, which is really important. So the skills development, the idea exploration, the failing forward, as Dr. Mazza said, this all, I think, encompasses what we've tried to establish as we develop this STEAM program four or five years into its existence. Okay, now you can go ahead, David. Thank you. So as Dr. Mazza said, some of the spaces have changed from the original vision. These are the spaces that you'll see as you walk through tonight. We have some of the spaces that are running in the way that I believe they were intended, like the design studio, the assembly lab, and the fabrication lab, but we've added on some new things in the time that I've been here. So we have a 3D printing studio that now has a number of machines, thanks to a grant from the CSF. We have a multimedia lab, which allows kids to create movies, stop-motion animations, all kinds of multimedia projects that they really didn't have the space for before. We, last year, I took a really strong interest in sustainability. I'm no Adam Pease, but I'm a hobbyist gardener, and I just kind of decided to learn alongside the kids and adults, and we've really grown this very strong, I think, garden program, and we now have a sustainability center, and we're hoping to get a grow light system so that we can bring our gardening indoors for the entire year. And then you'll see different collaboration spaces around the STEAM center, and one of the nice things is that everything in the space is mobile, so, you know, the way it looks right now is not how it may look tomorrow morning. The space changes and is adaptable according to the needs of students and teachers. Hit it, David.
So at this moment, we're going to ask the kids to get started walking over to the STEAM center, because they're going to set up for the gallery walk, which will be in a couple minutes. Just head right back, follow Ms. Rappaport to the back. There you go, right across the hall. Okay. So, you know, I know one strategic plan is coming to an end, one is beginning, but, you know, when you think about space, assessing process, not product, social, emotional, having a space for kids. Last year, we talked about the studio had kids that came literally three months before that, new to our district, and that's where they kind of found their space, you know, found their sense of belonging. You know, three of the kids that are here with us tonight have also new students within the last 12 months, so they have found their space, whether that be for school, during lunch or recess, or after school, working on projects that are not just by curriculum, but also by their choice. Of course, we cut across the curriculum, and that's the beauty of having a teacher that works across all the teachers and who has been a teacher in the district, that she can access all the teachers and really understand what they need, where the intersections are for them, and how they're going to get from point A to point B. So when you can team up a teacher, you know, in social studies with a teacher here in the STEAM center and come together, that would be the first product, projects that you will see on the right when you walk in there, some cultural background. Technology, of course, there's lots of high and low tech happening in there, and equity. You know, we are listening to students, the projects that we're making in there are born out of what students want to be doing. You know, of course, we're giving choices, but it's really on us to listen, build that empathy, and offer them out into potential options for our students, and that's what you're going to see when we walk across the hall into the STEAM center. So that's really what's exciting. I know we're going to come back here, and you'll want to ask them lots of questions, but, you know, we have these two-minute slots. There are, we could go to the next slide, please? So these are the five areas, right? Design lab, digital design studio, the print studio, the assembly lab, and the fabrication lab. So what we think is going to work best for our time is if we each start, and there's a 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 in there, so if you want to just split yourself up into those numbers, and then, you know, every two minutes we'll ding a bell or something like that, and you'll just rotate to the next, to the next opportunity. That way you can see them all, and then when we get back in to ask the kids questions, you'll, you know, you'll be able to hit from wherever you want to learn, so. But they're very excited, and many of their parents are out here tonight, so really appreciate them for supporting them here, and some of our former students sitting over here are like, man, that was just getting off the ground, and now look at what they're doing. But you have your own building over there at Greeley. So without further ado, let's walk across the hall.
I'll go to, I'll go to number five.
Okay, this is number one? This is five, awareness. Oh, I said station one.
What are you, one?
Yes.
Okay, well, you can choose one. So, okay, I'm going to choose one. You can stop with the number.
Yes. Yeah.
Sorry. Show me. You can turn around to find your position. So, I'm going to watch.
Why don't you talk? Why don't you talk to it?
No, did you film me lifting my pants up? Oh, well, I'll tell one. Film that. Now, this is a watermelon. I do put together this, oh, god. And basically, look.
I'm watching it on the big screen.
So now, I even added a bridge. That's going for it, you see? No, you'll take the candy out. So talk us through like, why? So like, yeah. Basically, the code, it's actually quite simple. I just start and find the reason, just like where they're mixed, just doing a couple of words. Oh, I didn't. Oh, are you a board member? Oh, yeah. Now it's about to tell.
You're going to do it still?
Come on.
It's soft there. Okay, we're going to run it, which then actually has. And then it builds it. And you didn't find a color? And then put the color of it in the one. Yeah, the fluid's there, yeah? I think it's white. Again, yeah, it's the same white. So if you wanted to make it, royal blue, you'd switch it to that.
Yeah, that different color.
So what's this and what's this?
Do you say?
There's a normal to what you did. Look, look, I'm. But the, um, sorry, this, I just came up with this thing.
Yeah, it almost looks like landing gear from the airplane.
That's good. So I'm trying to.
You need another axle coming out of the side. Okay, great. And then what is it that you're hoping to be able to deliver? Is that where all these paperclips come from?
So this works.
Yeah. Luckily, there's a couple more wheels.
Yeah, but I was also thinking, I could put this on like, on your box.
Yeah.
And it could move like that, but I think this wheel could also. I would know.
So what's it like working in here and having, like, it's different than classroom?
It's really different because we have access to all the materials. It's like, you don't have to go around to ask.
He just seems like a queer.
Without, like, where we can use and how to use things.
So you feel a bit more independent?
Yeah, we're also learning, like, life skills, how to work with the bed, and, and more about how, how to work with the children, stuff, you know, access.
You want to start? Yeah. That's the bell right after showwork. All right, well, thanks so much. Awesome. Or say you use it for you.
You're a, you're an artist. Very talented one, at that.
Oh, stop. Welcome. Tell me what your work is.
Oh, my goodness.
Do you remember?
Tell me about it.
So it's very helpful.
Well, go on. Hang on for that.
It's like designing. Thanks. Yes.
You have your box, everybody. They're all for a thought. Gorgeous.
It really helped me. Then just working on. So it was a good work.
Look at the base.
So it's hard this. You picked the format, the colors, you picked the graphics you could put on.
Provides a lot of, you can use a lot of the text that you use to start a launch.
Did you? About like the size of thing, where you want the person to know, right? Whether you come here during the drop-in times to work on this?
Not always. It depends on like, but I usually back come and act.
And so you're like.
And we're logged into.
Because you have a pass by house. To share with me.
This is Catherine. Ending. I'm going to get one more. I'm going to look for a whole. Um, look at how much it's holding. Yeah, you can see, like, it's flying. Can you show this?
Are they flying?
Yeah.
Wow. It's like a little bit of a clash of the lane.
And then you can.
You want to see Mr. Shonar? Come over here.
Personally think, the world's thing is turning it into a. You can turn them into AF.
And they actually look like they're here, right here, on the ground. That's really cool. How long does that take you to do?
Yeah, this one took me about 10 minutes.
10 minutes?
Yeah.
It would take me about 10 years, I think.
Because I made extra special chairs.
With the coding. What class did you do this in?
Well, this one?
Yeah, yeah.
This one I just did it. No, I literally just did, and for some of the half an hour that we were here before you, so.
Oh, okay. Fantastic.
I'm going to, I know the part of it, yeah, so I can change the design process. I can look at the big screen.
Okay.
I can show with the highlight. Again, the ocean. I'm going to make it the mountain, that's it. One, two, three, four, five, six, and seven, eight, nine, ten. And. And stop. Wait, I have a lot to show. Um, these are everything. It's super.
There you go. Okay. All right.
So I guess I'll just do. When I can go to ladder, like, that's.
Do they match with you?
Oh, I see, but I don't want to.
Yeah, I want to be in.
Oh, all right. All right. Last station, last station. Thanks for giving me a tour. Wherever you have not been yet. If you have not been yet. No, I got it. Am I done? I think I'm missing one. So, we're gonna go to the next, thank you very much. I guess I haven't done number two. Three, four, five, one. What are you bringing over to the station two?
I was impressed that it moved. So, I was trying to feel the need. Do that, and that was not happening. Yeah. Woo! Yes, yes, yes! Don't let it hit you, cut! Well done!
I was sorry. Oh, I love that. Yeah, I'm thinking. So, I'm glad it doesn't work. I mean.
So, do you need this? Because this is, right? So, this, it does very sadly, this is the way the engine. Do you need two more nails in the front? Or that, not necessarily.
I love hearing that.
Do you hear that? Get over here. Ah, like.
I'm on her page, thank you. Yeah, but, um, please, Max, please. No, that's the.
That's interesting.
Not too bad, I'm done with.
All right. Thank you so much for taking us into the STEAM lab. If, um, what we'd like to do now, if it's okay with everyone, the board would like to ask a couple of questions of our students. It was really exciting to be in there and seeing all the good work that's happening, all the different kind of work that's happening in that space. So, if we could.
We're missing Warren.
Oh. Is he still in there?
He's in there playing with the toy.
All right, maybe we could just, uh, we can start?
We can start. Um, I'm gonna start down with Hillary and, and come this way with our board members, asking you guys questions. So, I, I just wanna say, like, I'm just amazed at the unbelievable, unbelievably incredible work that you guys are doing in there. And it's so fun. So, um, okay, Hillary, go ahead and ask them anything you'd like.
Well, first of all, thank you guys for showing us all that amazing work that you're doing in there. I guess what I wanna ask is, how do you feel that getting to do more of these sort of hands-on projects helps you learn in sort of some of the more academic work? Like, I know a, a number of you had done these projects in conjunction with other classes, whether it was science or math. And how do you feel like having the STEAM Center helps you in those classes as well?
Uh, I think it makes us more, like, inclined to do it. Like, it's more exciting and, uh, makes people more interested in doing the work.
Um, I think that I get, uh, better at doing my work, cause I'm more active.
Um, I think it really helps us, like, um, work on independent stuff that we would wanna learn, instead of just being taught stuff that we might not be interested in.
Um, I think a lot of the time, it makes the work a lot easier and more engaging and fun to do.
So, Board of Education, I would say that doing these hands-on activities, basically, like, and teachers are like, the design process, kinda like, when you're like, don't get it right, try, try, try again.
That's great.
Or the definition of insanity, technically. Yet, I totally don't agree with that. Just trying, or trying again is simply a way of learning.
Oh, thank you so much.
Thank you for that.
Now, perhaps the second row could answer Ryan's question. This is a good way to do it. This is great. Go ahead.
Yes, I, well, I loved those answers. That was terrific. I, I was, it, it looks really sophisticated. So, I'm curious, if you had a chance to give some advice to, like, the next kids that are gonna come in there, like, what do you wish you knew would help the next set of kids come in there and get, make the most out of the space that's there?
Um, I think that, like, personally, I'm really highly critical of myself, and that's honestly not a good thing. Cause every project I make, I want to do the best that I can, and it's not very good. So, I would tell them, you should have fun, honestly, like, you, you having fun is the priority, and not being like me and stressing over the, every little detail. Yeah.
Um, so I think helping to note, like, how to work the tools, helps you to have, like, a more fun and engaging time in the STEAM Center?
Um, I think that just be yourself doing it and just be free, don't, like, overthink it. It could be some, just pretty simple doing it.
I think that it helps you to, um, understand, like, I think that they could just maybe take more advice from their friends and not, uh, be, like, not think that everybody's doing better than them, or think that they're underperforming.
That's right, yeah.
Um.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Can I answer Kaylee's question?
So, I, I noticed, I know that one of the students, um, mentioned about try, try, try again, keep trying until you learn it. And, um, I was noticing when I was going to the different stations, that some students had started in fifth grade and some had come in later. But how do you, um, build on top of, how does it make you feel to be able to continue your work or try something different, um, the next semester or the next year? Um, even if you started in sixth grade or, or even seventh? How does that make you feel? And what, what do you do? How do you think outside the box?
So, in fifth grade, I failed a lot of my projects, like, they were super bad. But in sixth grade, I got a little bit more understanding of what to do in the STEAM lab and their resources, and more with computers and technology. So, that gave me a head start into doing better than last year.
I couldn't entirely hear the question, so I'm just gonna answer what I heard. Um, I think that it's really good that we can continue the projects that we started the next semester. Hmm, next semester and start, hmm, stuff, hmm, new stuff, because it gives us a chance to learn more.
Well, first of all, you can always add one more. So, like, if you did well the first time, then, like, you can set even higher standards for yourself the next time, which is going to lead to, like, a constant sense of improvement. And hopefully, that will, like, carry on to other areas of school.
Nice, thank you. And Warren?
Um, I, the imagination was great, the ingenuity. So, I saw some of the students doing 3D printing or doing the design with, like, like, a little robotic ball and making things move around. And even design the cart and ball. So, you get to do each other's projects, like, if, if you're doing the 3D ball with the, or the ball with the, um, the cart, you get to eventually do 3D printing. Or if you're doing 3D printing, do you get to use the, uh, like, build, um, the wooden robots that, that go down the ramps? Or how's that work? And you, and, and if you do that, you get to bring some of the things you learned from what you've done previously to your new idea?
Yes, because, like, every year, like, in class, first of all, we do, like, different things. So, we do get to, like, try everything out. And like, once we learn something, we can build on top of that to do something else.
Maybe two, do, two more students wanna answer that question?
Um, I just basically got here, like, three months ago, because this is my first year. But, um, I had STEAM, uh, or design art first quarter, and I think I was, I felt happy, like, every morning that we had, that we got to go. And every afternoon that we got to go, because I was really excited to continue with my project. Um, I was doing the, the little cart thing. But I think that if you feel that you're doing better and you're improving, then, um, you, like, can carry on into more advanced things that your teachers tell you that you can do, and they, uh, try to help you to feel better about yourself doing the things. And it makes me really happy, so.
That's great.
It's great.
Pardon me?
You must repeat the question.
Okay, so, you, you were doing different projects, but you get to do other projects, like, go from 3D printing to the woodworking, to the robotics? And if you do, how do you move those things you've learned from one to the other?
So, I definitely say this is linked to our two project. You're first up, probably my biggest accomplishment is coding. Like, I one coded a game called Sonic Hill. It was using by the platform I coded it on, and I got interviewed by it. It has, like, four hundred K plus view, which is more than Sonic games in, or Sonic games itself. Like, the lean popular ones, that cause my little platform. Yet, I take my skills, like, I'm probably say, I'm one of the best coders on the platform. Like, I was able to code online stuff before it shut down, no one else was able to do that. And like, I was able to code multiplayer simultaneously. So, I say all those skills I have found have kinda carried over into, like, code spaces or speedos, because it's not like similar types of coding. Just like a different aesthetic to it.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Like, also, I have more.
Oh, okay.
I have more to say, you. So, next up, 3D modeling. Like, I say doing the 3D modeling on code spaces really helped me in tech. Hello, Mr. Stasi, if you're seeing this? Because, well, I already know how to do most of the stuff. Like, on the first day of using ThinkQ Cat, I made a 3D world model, which was quite simple, yet also was quite complex. Kinda like a combination of both.
Jack, I love that you're talking about different teachers that you've been doing this work with, um, beyond Mrs. Garris. And like, making all those connections to different subjects is amazing. So, thank you for sharing.
One of our board members.
And then, I, yeah. And then, um, Mrs. Shepperson, may wanna ask a question? The students may wanna answer?
Well, I, I just, I think we're all just amazed by the, the level of work that you're doing in there and the excitement that you bring to it. And just the unbelievable opportunity that you have in there. And it's so exciting. Like, I walk in there and I say, wow! So, I'm curious, and, and anyone can answer this, like, have you had a wow moment in there, like, wow, I never thought I'd really love this so much, but I love this? Something that you really didn't expect, that you would love in the STEAM lab, that surprised you?
Um, so, yeah, something that I really loved when I first, like, came to the STEAM Center was, like, working with cardboard. Because, um, uh, cardboard, it's very easy to, like, use to make different things. And, um, it was fun to use that a lot, so it helped me to, like, develop more STEAM skills. And, um, as I go on to other grades, I now know, like, how to use, like, other engineering skills.
Um, when I started 3D printing, um, when I first got my model and I found it out of the, um, 3D printing machine, I thought it was really cool that I could create something, like, um, from a computer that could actually show up. So, I thought that was really cool.
Uh, so, I was first like, ooh, 3D printing. But when I really started it, um, I didn't think it was that good. So, I decided, uh, to online 3D design, and I found I like that a lot more than I thought I would like, uh, 3D printed.
Wow, that's amazing.
So, um, you wanna, one more in the back? Sure, one more.
So, in fifth grade, we were learning about width, length, and depth. So, we made cities, uh, we made, like, houses and stores and restaurants out of cardboard boxes and turned it into a town. And then we measured it, the, the length, the width, and the depth, and then we added it all to, and then we multiplied it all together. So, technically, it's math and art, because I've, I know that everyone's first priority is to decorate it as nicely as they can.
So, I just wanna, on behalf of, uh, us and, um, the district, I just wanna thank all of our students at Seven Bridges for sharing your experiences in our STEAM lab. And Mrs. Garris and Mrs. Rappaport and Dr. Mazza for facilitating this evening for us today. It was absolutely amazing. Um, and I'm, I'm so happy to hear about the way that you're experiencing learning in, in, uh, in Seven Bridges as middle school students and how excited you are about being in there. Cause I was really excited just experiencing it alongside of you. I couldn't do half of what I saw in there, which is amazing. And so, I wanna thank you for being here tonight. Thank your parents for, um, supporting you and allowing you to come out tonight. And, um, I didn't know if the board wanted to say anything else before we take our big picture in the front, um, of our middle school students, so. All right, so let's give you a round of applause. And if we're middle school, if you could take center stage, please, with, uh, Dr. Maz and Mrs. Rappaport and Mrs. Garris. And we're gonna take a big picture. David Hayes is gonna take that picture.
I just wanna say, as they're taking this picture, how great it is that we were able to come here, because we could not have really fully envisioned this from a presentation. It really, we really had to come and get hands-on and seen it, it was amazing.
Thank you, Seven Bridges!
This is always the best part of the board meeting.
I know. It's our favorite, favorite part, going on road trips around the district, so we can see how great everything is. Thank you guys so much.
We're okay leaving those chairs up here, too. Okay, just leave them up on the stage, it's fine. Thank you so much, everybody, and thank you, parents, uh, for being here tonight. So, we're gonna transition back into the superintendent's report. Okay, so, um, as Jane had mentioned, we're so grateful to our community for, uh, approving our capital projects. And so, um, what we're gonna do now is we're beginning our planning forward. And so, in order to begin our work, we have to select an architect, we have to select, uh, a manager of the project. So, we've advertised our proposals online for submission, and we've asked for them to be returned at the, uh, at the beginning of January. And then the board will go through an interview process and select who will be, um, quarterbacking all these projects for us. I have two highlighted, uh, because we're gonna try to complete those projects this summer. So, we're, they're going through a different process. We pulled them out of the larger RFP process, um, cause we view them as, um, not as complicated and things that we would like to do before we head into the next school year. So, we are, we're gonna move forward, um, at a different pace with our electronic locks, K through eight, and, um, with our communication upgrades in, in all six of our buildings. Uh, so, had, Jane had mentioned that we had our second strategic planning steering committee. And so, on January ninth, we're going to engage our community in a thought exchange. We had done this the last time, and this is an opportunity for the community to provide input to the committee on what things are important to them, that they would like us to prioritize, um, over the next five years. So, I just wanted to announce that, uh, communication will be coming out from us at six AM on Monday, January ninth, asking our community to participate in the thought exchange process, which will take place over a, a course of a few weeks. Um, so now, I'm gonna transition over to, um, Andrew Criscilia, who's going to talk about, um, our process forward with filling our Director of Equity, Inclusion, and Wellness position, or reshaping that position. We had mentioned it last meeting, but we have more information to share today. So, um, as, as promised, I'm gonna turn it over to Andrew.
Sure, thank you. Um, so, the, the work is ongoing, and we have, uh,
Sure, thank you. Um, so the, the work is ongoing and we have a, our next important day here is coming up with the CARES Committee on January 19th, which is going to be a work session. So what we've done so far is started to gather documents, put plans in place, to gather information from all stakeholders, um, review our, our, our timeline going forward. We met with the CARES Committee um, already to review what's been done so far in the district, get a context for the um, new position that we're going to be hiring for, how we're going to restructure it and move forward. So we have that context and we have all the information that we're going to be moving forward with. So a couple of pieces here are faculty, a number of focus groups that I'm leading over the next several weeks to be reported back on the 19th. So there's going to be faculty focus groups by building and those dates have already been set on the calendar. Administrator focus groups around, and all these are around the needs of our DEI work as seen from the perspective of every single one of these stakeholders. What it is for a student, for a teacher, for administrator, uh, for the PTA, parents in the community. And um, what we need to support going forward. And then we will make decisions about how to best support that with the position. So also our BIPOC affinity group, our white allies affinity group, PTA diversity committee feedback group, and then open student sessions at Greeley. There's going to be two of those and invitations for that will be coming out this week. I think it's going to be the 10th and the 12th of January. Um, we also have a lot of other data that we're pulling forward. First is one of the biggest foundations of that is our equity audit from Insight that we're returning to. That was last year. It came out looking at their assessment of the needs of the district. Also the special education audit, um, has pieces in there around equity that we're examining. We've recently uh, given a survey to all of our students at the secondary level around student belonging. And then that is a piece of what we're looking at. And then also Philip Marcus provided us some, some feedback and detailed written feedback for the position moving forward. His recommendations, how to restructure it based on his experiences. So taking all of this, coming in, working with Insight and our CARES Committee, bringing all of these pieces to the work session on January 19th um, to examine all of that and as, as a group of constituents, um, to make recommendations going forward for this position.
And I also want to mention on the agenda tonight, not only will Insight be facilitating this meeting for us, but they, we're increasing our um, professional development days with them onsite over the course of the spring semester to meet our needs. And then I thought it would just be helpful to, for people to understand who is on the CARES Committee. So who's going to be um, a part of that process on the, on, in January. So we have Board of Education members, we have our faculty and staff, we have BSU students, we have parents, and some of the parents who are part of the committee have a dual role as members of the town CRE. And then we have PTA representatives. And then at that specific meeting, we're also going to invite leadership from our CCT, our administrative, um, administrative unit. Uh, we've asked the PTA to provide members from the Committee of Diversity, Race, and Belonging representatives to the, to the meeting. There'll be central office administrators and there'll be additional high school students from Greeley. So that's who will be attending the meeting on the 19th and then we'll come, we'll be back and update the board on January 25th on where we are with the process. Um, so then I, Jamie has launched a new website. So I asked Jamie if she can explain that tonight to the board.
So if you remember, um, one of the recommendations of the PCG report that was an investigation that was conducted last year was that we create a multi-tiered system of support. And MTSS is the next iteration of RTI. So we've been working on developing that process for the past several months. It is still a work in progress and although we have begun to implement it. Um, so far we have had two joint faculty meetings devoted to MTSS. And we have a leadership team that meets monthly to go over things, issues that might be arising, changes or details that need to be addressed in the process. But one of the requests that came from teachers is that there was a landing pad of resources, information, forms, procedures, and all of that. So we had our official launch of our landing page or webpage yesterday um, at one of the joint faculty meetings where teachers can access any information that they need in order to create a plan um, that will help them to identify an intervention and monitor a student's progress. So we can help kids as soon as it is that they are encountering difficulty. So what you see on this slide is the, is a graphic of our process for MTSS on top. That's our tier one process. And then those are, happen to be two slideshows that really explain to teachers each aspect of that process. So it will be a work in progress, continually updated and populated.
Sorry about that.
That's okay.
So I just wanted to mention, we had an emergency meeting to address a steam leak that had, has uh, become highly problematic at Greeley. I know this is, it's like steam coming out of the front. And so the hole and the, and the pipe was bigger than we anticipated. So um, at the end of the day today, we did wind up turning off um, some, some heat to sections of the building. Uh, we may or may not have to move the band concerts tomorrow to the high school gym. We are prepared to do that. But we'll make a decision on whether or not we need to make that transition tomorrow, probably around noon. We'll let our families know. We'll just have to. We, we've been in there before, so we'll just have to um, make the accommodations if we see, if we see that that's necessary. And they'll be working over the weekend. We anticipate that this will be completely addressed by Tuesday. So I want to thank Joe Gormando and Andrew for working on this. It's become a very complicated problem for us. But you know, the pipes under the building are old and so we need to address them as they begin to fail. Um, I did meet with the faculty this week and I presented an overview of our results from our Sense of Belonging survey that we administered our students. Um, we had 85% of the kids take the survey in November. This is the second time we've administered it. Um, just a very broad overview. We're going to have a larger webinar for families in January. But you can see a comparison between our results in 2021 and 2022 by the district. We have this broken down by building. We also have it broken down by subgroup. I'm not going into that tonight. But I would encourage our families, if they want to learn more about this, to attend our, our webinar. And our teachers will be diving into this with our administrators in the future. But just as a reminder, um, there are three chunks of the survey. Diversity and inclusion is our students reporting on how diverse, integrated, and fair school is for students from different races, ethnicities, and cultures. So you'll see that we've made some gains in that area. Cultural awareness and action is how often students learn about, discuss, and confront issues of race, ethnicity, and culture in schools. And then sense of belonging where you see that we, we haven't moved that um, since the last administration of that survey. And we really need to focus on um, that area with our buildings. And we're already talking about some adjustments that we're going to make next year. Um, is how much students feel that they are valued members of the school community. And there's sub-questions in there about connection to each other and adults. And so we're, we're in conversations about, you know, what are some um, tangible ways that we can address this moving forward that are different um, from ways that we've tried to address this? Cause obviously we're not, we're not making the type of impact that we would have hoped, or at least our kids are not reporting it. But again, we are going to have a webinar on January 9th at 6:30 and then we'll push the webinar out to the community. So I would, and it'll be much more in-depth and detailed. So I encourage our families to attend or to watch the webinar um, when we release it. And then we'll also release the full survey. So people can see the results by question um, after the webinar takes place. So we have the opportunity to explain it. Um, okay, so uh, at the last meeting, we had shared that I would be um, addressing the recommendations made by Alteris in the presentation to the, to the community that they had made in November. And um, we also heard from JJ and our consulting who had surveyed our parents, staff, and students about safety and security. So um, Andrew and Joe and I have met and we have begun steps um, based on the recommendation to address the following areas. Some of them will take place in the spring. Some of them will be budgeted for to take place next year. But we are moving forward with door alarms. Wow. This is, door alarms to go off at, when doors are left ajar. Um, we're going to expand our cameras in the hallways at the middle schools. As you know, the community has approved the electronic locking systems at the elementary and middle school. So that will take place over the summer. Um, we've implemented coded lock boxes at all entrances. So emergency personnel can come in, plug in a code, get the cars and the keys that they need to get into our buildings. At the, in the main offices, they'll all have the same emergency go bags. We're going to be revising our safety plans based on Alteris' recommendations. And also streamline our reunification plans when there's an emergency and we have to move kids out of our buildings. Um, Greeley is going to have a safety task force again. We're going to recommission the task force. We're going to use the audit um, from Alteris. And Sandy, Dr. Sandy Sepi and Joe Gormano will co-chair that to see if there's some additional adjustments we need to make it really based on the, the audit that was provided by Alteris to us. Um, we're going to, so each building is going to go through their specific pieces of the audit and make adjustments based on the feedback that they received. And then we're talking about like, we have to figure out a check-in, checkout system for our faculty. So we need to talk with our faculty on how to do that. So we know where everyone is in, in case of emergencies. So we, we have an understanding who's going to be able to help versus who, who went out um, during, during the day, during their free time to go get lunch or something like that. So these are the things that we're talking about that, these are not limited to what I'm sharing with you, but some of the other things that we're doing. Um, just, it's not appropriate to share in public, right? Those deals of safety and security. But we'll keep you updated um, on our process. And now Adam's going to talk about our grants that are on the agenda tonight.
So we have one grant on the agenda. Um, thanks to our friends from the CSF, uh, the Student Government and the Office of Student Life at Greeley. There is actually over a hundred clubs at Greeley and many of them move money through fundraisers, dance tickets, um, things like that. And, and that money moves through the student treasurers through the Office of Student Life. So they needed some um, equipment to help manage that money, lock boxes and safes and money counters and things like that. So you'll see the um, donation, suggested donation from the CSF, $264.77 through a grant written by Lauren Olmo and assisted by our student treasurer of student government. So that'll just help us be a little bit more efficient and safe with that cash that they end up moving through the clubs.
You, and then just we have some, we have our last few events. We have our, our band concert on Thursday and we have our chorus concert next week. And then of course, we're going to go on holiday break. And then we begin in January again with college nights, a cappella concerts, um, theater productions. And so we just want to take an opportunity on behalf of uh, all of us who work here to wish everyone a happy holidays. And we hope you have a great time off with your families and um, Happy New Year. So thank you. That's the end of the superintendent's report.
Thank you. Okay, so that brings us to our committee reports. I think we've had a number of committee meetings um, over the last, you know, since we last met. Does anyone want to start off with a report?
Health and safety met yesterday and with the community members on the committee, Andrew did a great job leading the discussion. We talked about um, a lot about the security audit and what that was going to mean for the district. The fact that the uh, second bond proposal didn't, didn't pass, but what we could do and what we should be doing despite of that. And how we can continue uh, strengthening the security of our, of our district, including Greeley, especially Greeley. And the second thing is facilities committee, probably just for the rest of the board's edification, will be meeting a lot more now that we can pass this bond. We'll have a lot more work to do as we didn't, when we passed the bond in 2016, to work together and prepare for the projects that the bond is going to allow us to do. So thank you to the community for, for doing that. And we're looking forward to kicking this off. Thank you, Andrew.
Great.
I can jump in.
Sure.
We had a CARES committee meeting, which I attended with Kaylee. Um, and Dr. Ackerman really spoke to, and Andrew Criscilia spoke to a lot of the work we did there. So I'm not going to reiterate it, just to say that, you know, we're really excited and um, dedicated to continuing this very important work. Um, so the CARES committee, as they described, will meet again uh, in January. Um, and then also we had a policy committee meeting. Um, some of that I won't go into. I'll speak to it.
Right, because we'll be getting to that very shortly.
But the one thing to sort of preview is we talked about, and, and just, we're making no changes for this year, I want to be clear. But restructuring, um, using the graduation policy to look at who will speak at graduation. Um, because for example, this year we have 18 valedatorians. Um, so we want to, to take a look at how uh, at who speaks at graduation and how, how that's chosen. So we'll, we'll revisit that. We're in a very nascent stages of looking at that. But again, I just want to be very clear, no changes are even being thought about for this year. It will remain as everybody expects it to be.
And, and just for the agenda, for purposes of the agenda, we have one policy we're adjusting, the other two, we're just replacing our, our Title IX. One of our Title IX positions, um, we're adding Joshua Caldwell-Bach as one of our um, administrators who provides oversight for Title IX investigations. So there's no substantive changes to them.
Um, I'll, I'll jump in and say that Kaylee and I were, uh, we had a communication advisory committee meeting last week. And uh, we met with our committee as always and find these meetings very helpful. We have three individuals who volunteered to join us on this. They're all communications professionals. And uh, they volunteer their time to give us feedback on how we communicate to our district families. And it's incredibly helpful. Um, we focused on a number of items, including the bond, including our, including our DEI work and other current matters that seem to be in the forefront of recent discussions. And we always find that really productive as we continue to, you know, use their advice to help us think about our messaging to the community and how to disseminate information in the most, you know, efficient and helpful and clear way possible. So I found that really helpful. Thank you, Hillary, for talking about the CARES committee. But that, that is a committee that Ryan and I are on and had an unavoidable conflict that day, both of us did. So thank you, Hillary and Kaylee for jumping in. And Ryan and I will be back at the next meeting. Is there, um, there is a Harsh Greeley Scholarship Fund meeting tonight that I would be the liaison to, but it's going on right now. So we'll have to report on that later. Um, is there anything else?
Oh, okay.
So sports boosters, we met last week and just a lot of logistical things and just trying to, you know, the budget. And um, planning for the senior athlete event at the end of the year. Um, and just talking about how to boost interest in sports teams and, and boost community um, sentiments and, at the games. And how do we get students to come out and cheer, not for just the, you know, the sports that you're, you play in or that you're interested in, but just other things. And how um, our director of um, at the athletics department, Jamie Block is, you know, very good about trying to promote. You know, when there was a show going on at Greeley, you know, he, he blasted it to everybody who was on the sports pages and said, hey, come out and come watch the show at Greeley. And you know, now the wrestling team is selling seat cushions. And so he's, he's pushing that through. So um, I think just trying to build um, community around um, a small part of our community. So I talked about that. And then um, how the in-person eighth grade parent orientation is coming up on January 19th. And you know, people should be aware of that because if you're not there, then you, you know, it's a big problem for one, you know. So things like that. And how they're looking for um, new members and they're looking for a liaison to Bell Middle School. So all of these opportunities that are out there and um, yeah.
Okay, thank you. I also want to just jump in and thank the PTA who like, since our last meeting, held a really lovely uh, holiday luncheon. And they invite the administrators and they invite the board. And we want to thank Tara Miras and everyone who made that such a lovely afternoon. It allows us to connect with all the members of the PTA that volunteer their time at all of our schools. So just a big thank you for that as well. Anything else in terms of committees? I just, this isn't really a committee, but I uh, just wanted to mention, I jumped on the um, webinar, the advocacy um, update from the New York State School Boards Association this afternoon. Um, and very, very briefly, most of the advocacy update is in line with the last advocacy update I gave. Um, but just that they are looking into working with um, Governor Hochul's office now that, that she has been elected as opposed to, you know, stepping up. They're sort of hopeful to make more legislative progress in terms of things like potentially tax cap reform and um, some budgeting relief. I think they may have been more optimistic because it's their job to sell their ability to get that done than I am necessarily. But it was an interesting meeting and they are certainly trying uh, to address some of the, the advocacy uh, issues that are, that are important to not only us, but, but all school districts. All right, thank you. Okay, I think that wraps up committee reports and that moves us over to our public comment period. As you know, we always welcome public comments, but with, for, in respect for each other's time, we ask that everyone limit their comments to three minutes. Board members may be contacted as always via email or phone. And after the public comment period has been completed, board members may have a discussion among themselves regarding comments presented. So we'll ask if anyone has a public comment, excuse me that I'm putting my hand up the way the lights are here. I cannot see anything out in the audience, so forgive me. But there are mics and we'd ask that everyone come up and please state your name. Um, so I might not be able to see who's lined up. I'm going to ask Lisa to help me too. I don't know if they can lower the lights a little bit. I'm sorry, I can't see. But step up to the mic and um, feel free to give your public comment. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Erin Song. I'm a current junior at Greeley, as well as one of the vice presidents of AAPIA, or the Asian American Pacific Islander Association. Our club was founded in 2020 and we aim to create a safe space for all students and address issues that matter to them, especially students who feel marginalized because of their race. On the topic of winter holidays, as was.
Can, excuse me, can you step up to the mic a little closer?
Excuse me, can you step up to the mic a little closer? A little bit louder so we can hear you more clearly. Thank you.
Yes. On the topic of winter holidays, as was mentioned previously, it has recently come to our attention that our school doesn't have major Asian holidays off, namely Lunar New Year, Diwali--
Whoops.
--and Eid al-Fitr.
Whoops. Hold on one second, because we want to be able to hear you. Let's try again, I'm so f--.
Yeah. It has recently come to our attention that our school doesn't have major Asian holidays off, namely Lunar New Year, Diwali, and Eid al-Fitr, three holidays which are observed by a large population of Asian students in our district. Specifically, according to a survey done by CCSD earlier this year, our school demographic is 15.9% Asian, proving that a large percent of students are observing these holidays. Students deserve these days off because they shouldn't have to be forced to choose between their familial, cultural obligations and their academics. Comparatively, our neighbors, Yonkers Public School District, with a 5.1% Asian population, has Eid off. New York City schools, with an Asian population of 16.6%, started including the Muslim holidays Eid al-Fitr and Eid al-Tah on their district calendars in 2015. Additionally, schools in New York City started including Lunar New Year on their district calendars in 2016 because, as said by Assemblyman Ron Kim of Queens, "This holiday is not about kids just getting a day off from school. It's about the city of New York telling hundreds of thousands of Asian Americans that their culture and heritage is a part of the American fabric." Diwali will be a public school holiday in New York City starting in 2023, and by following this example, we demonstrate our commitment to diversity, equity, and equality. I urge Chappaqua to be committed to having a school calendar that reflects and honors the extraordinary diversity of its student population. We understand that the CCSD calendar isn't usually finalized until January, so there is still time to make change to get Lunar New Year, Diwali, and Eid off school. Eid al-Tah, another significant Asian holiday, occurs sometimes during the school year and other times closer to the summer, but occurs closer to the summer next year, so we understand that this holiday is not yet added to our district calendar. In the future, however, we would also like to include it in your consideration. As a representative of AAPIA, I can confidently tell you that having these three holidays off school would be deeply appreciated. I would also like to state that giving these, giving students these holidays off is incredibly important because it enables a teachable moment in the classroom for our students to learn about cultural importance and religious tolerance and the contributions of various cultures to a modern American society, helping to further our district values of diversity, equity, and inclusion, as well as enhancing students' level of cultural literacy. Please let our words tonight not be taken with hostility, but instead as a call to action in order to further our district values, where every single student feels they have the right to belong and exist as they are, no matter their ethnic identity or cultural background. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Cindy Chen. I'm currently in ninth grade at Greeley, and I'm a member of BSU. Lunar New Year is an extremely important holiday for myself and many other Asian students in this district. Since kindergarten, my older sister and I would take a day off to celebrate the holiday, sometimes with relatives flying all the way over from China for the special day. It was my favorite holiday growing up, filled with laughter and celebration, and sometimes was one of the few days where I felt truly connected to my Chinese heritage and culture as a child of two immigrants living in a predominantly white town. As my sister and I got older, schoolwork started to pile up, so staying home and missing valuable class time was no longer an option. Because of that, I began to resent the holiday and how I always had to come up with an excuse as to why I was missing school. I began to dread the moment where I'd have to explain to my friends why I was missing school for a holiday that they didn't understand or know much about because it was and is still disregarded in this district. What shocked me the most, looking back, is that I felt this way all before I turned 11. It didn't occur to me until just last year that the problem wasn't my culture, my background, my family, or anything about me at all. After all, why should I, at barely 10 years old, have to choose between my education and my identity? I envied my friends whose traditions and cultures were recognized in the holidays observed in our school calendars and had never faced this choice before and will never have to. No, I was not the problem. It was the lack of acknowledgement from the district that this day might be of any importance for a significant number of students. Sometimes I wonder when the war between myself and my cultural identity started. However, I realize that it is impossible for a fifth grader to feel secure in their identity when their culture has never felt seen or valued by their very own school community. And with the horrifying spike in Asian hate over the past few years, which, by the way, is not a new phenomenon, it frightens me to see my own and my fellow Asian peers' presences and values dismissed. I began to realize that many of my Asian peers shared the same sentiment and frustration at Lunar New Year being, not being recognized by our district as an important holiday. Even schools in New York City, which belong to the largest public school system in the country, address the relevance of the holiday by providing their students with a day off. We know there may be some concern about adding more holidays onto our calendar, which would add on days to the end of the school year so that we meet the 180 days of instructional learning mandated by the state. So to avoid this, we propose shifting three of the four superintendent conference days onto the dates of these holidays to allow students to celebrate. As you all finalize your plans for the 2023 to 2024 calendar in January, I implore you to take into account all of the Asian American students who observe Lunar New Year. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Ria Narainen, and I'm also a freshman at Horace Greeley High School and a first-generation Indian American. I'm a member of the BSU and AAPIA. My parents were born in India, and they brought the tradition of celebrating Diwali, the festival of lights, over to the USA. And after I was born, it has been a tradition that we celebrate in my household every year. My brother and I dress up in traditional Indian clothing and celebrate this day of good over evil and justice over injustice with food, prayers, lighting of traditional Indian lamps called dias, as well as sparklers outside. It was such a memorable experience of my childhood, and it really helped me get in touch with my culture, but it was unfortunate that I was only able to experience this part of my identity after a full day of school. Due to living and growing up in Chappaqua, a predominantly white town, other cultures weren't well-known. It was only Diwali and a few other days of the year where I could truly experience my culture that was different from the majority of people living here. It was difficult, especially when I was younger and the holiday got no recognition. We would celebrate Christmas and Hanukkah at school by coloring little Christmas trees and menorahs and learning about the stories of these holidays. My holiday was never taught about, and my holiday was never explained or celebrated. To that younger Ria, it confused her as to why her holiday was never put in the spotlight and how my celebrations of Diwali could only start once I got home from school, while other kids in my grade got a full day to celebrate. It disheartened me when I finally realized that she had just accepted that her culture and her holiday were never going to be recognized or accepted by her community and school district, and that this was just the way it was going to be. Eventually, I began to realize how unjust and discriminatory this was, especially after I finally learned about other holidays that were also being blatantly ignored by the school district, which, by the way, I had to learn about from friends, not even the school itself, which also led me to believe that no one even knew about Diwali either till I had explained it to them. How does a school claim to treat everyone equally, give everyone the same opportunities, and teach everyone about all races, cultures, and ethnicities, and still overlook holidays that are being celebrated by almost 16% of the school population? Over time, I feel as though my household has started celebrating Diwali less and less due to the fact that there is simply no time anymore. After a full day of school and then after-school activities as well, where was the time to celebrate with family and friends and to eat traditional food and dress up? It felt as though, during the greatly increasing hours of homework plus studying for tests, the holiday was slowly fading away. While my friends got time off from school to celebrate their holidays and didn't have to worry about tests or homework, I was sitting at my desk at school and at home, working on a day that should be devoted and reserved to appreciating and acknowledging my Indian roots. I was forced to prioritize my education and schoolwork over my culture, which was something that deserved to be embraced and celebrated. As an Indian American person living in this town, I feel as though it is imperative to allow just one day of celebration to experience a holiday that we are currently missing out on. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Rashmida Nayuru, and I'm currently a junior at Greeley and the co-president of SEEMS, or South Asian Middle Eastern Society. SEEMS was formed last year to make sure all students feel included in the Greeley community and to spread cultural awareness. Diwali, or Deepa Valley, is a holiday celebrated for the victory of good over evil by more than a billion people all over the world, including Hindu, Buddhist, Sikh, and Jain, though it is not limited to those groups. Many in the Chappaqua community, including myself, celebrate the holiday every year. Family and friends gather and spend time with each other, eating food together and engaging in prayer. I am the daughter of two Indian immigrants, and I am an immigrant myself, though I've grown up mostly in America. One of the ways I'm able to stay connected to my culture is through celebrating holidays, Diwali being one of the most significant. My mother always makes many delicious dishes, and I get to dress up in traditional clothing. Yet, when Diwali falls on a school day, this opportunity disappears. There's no time to do the traditional prayer to goddess Lakshmi when there's a bus to catch to get to school. There's no time to visit family or friends and spend time with them. The most we're able to do is call and wish them a happy Diwali. There is no time to light the dias, the traditional lamps, or paint them as my family does every year. Without the time to celebrate, our culture is slowly fading away. The celebration of Diwali is one that is deeply important to me as an Indian Hindu, and I think that it should be made a school holiday in our district. New York City has already decided that it will be made a public holiday in their school districts from 2023 onward, and 12 Long Island school districts have already given the day off this year. And to the argument that there wasn't enough room in the New York City school calendar to have Diwali as a school holiday, Assemblywoman Raj Kumar said, "Well, my legislation makes the room. Diwali has already passed this year and is on a Sunday next year, but when planning the calendar for future years, please consider giving students off on Diwali." [applause]
Hi. Sorry. My name is Isabel Wong. I am a freshman at Horace Greeley High School and am a first-generation Chinese American, meaning both my parents immigrated from China. I belong to the BSU and AAPIA clubs. Since both my parents are from China, we celebrate Lunar New Year every year. We usually eat together as a family, the eve of the holiday and the night of, along with putting up decorations around the house. My family also tries to get together with relatives, but that hasn't been as easy with schoolwork. It's so much more difficult to make time for the family and having people fly in or out from different countries when everyone is busy with school. I remember when I was a lot younger, still in elementary school, and there would always be some extended family at my house, or we would go to their homes. I remember always looking forward to this, when my family and, when my sister and I would collect red envelopes from relatives filled with money. I didn't understand what this meant at the time, but I appreciated being able to see my family and kneeling for our elders, showing that we hope they are blessed for the New Year. As I said, I haven't been able to celebrate as much since I've grown up and had to put school first. Just thinking about everyone I know, I can predict a number of students would see a huge difference in being able to not go to school on the day of a major East Asian holiday. They would be able to celebrate to the full extent of their culture. I'm sure the same applies to the people who celebrate the other two holidays, though I can't speak for them. All we are asking is for a few days off on huge holidays that a fraction of the population of our district celebrate. We already have days off or breaks that aren't related to any holidays, and yet we have not gotten days off for important times for the Asian community. Given that we have Christmas off and the American New Year's off, it is undermining to the Asian community to not have important times for us off. There are 20.6 million people in the U.S. who identify as Asian, Native Hawaiian, or Pacific Islander. This is excluding the people who are a mix of one of these races and another. Over 20 million people and still so many schools don't give these people time to celebrate their cultural holidays. One of the ways Chappaqua can keep educating everyone on diversity and equity is giving days off for major Asian holidays, showing that they are as important. Some of these holidays last longer than the one day we are asking off for them. For example, in 2023, Lunar New Year is celebrated from January 22nd to February 5th, which would be 15 days. Diwali will be observed from November 10th to 14th. We are only asking for one day a year for holidays that last way longer, in contrast to the week or two we get off for one day of Christmas. Besides, this next year, both Lunar New Year and Diwali lie on a Sunday, meaning it wouldn't even impact the schedule of this coming school year. Thank you for listening.
Good evening. My name is Rui Kana, a junior at Greeley. I'm an executive of the South Asian and Middle Eastern Society and a member of AAPIA. I am a first-generation Indian American, and I have grown up in Chappaqua for the majority of my life. Throughout elementary school, my mother would come to school every Diwali to teach the kids in my class my culture and religion by sharing the story of Diwali while we painted dias, clay lamps. For one day every year, I felt appreciated for being who I am. However, this feeling didn't last. As I progressed through middle school, my mother could no longer come to school every year. Diwali now feels like any other day when it shouldn't. Diwali is an important festival for many South Asians, much like Christmas is for Christian and Hanukkah is for Jewish people. Although we may be a minority, we still deserve the right to celebrate our festivals and holidays without feeling like it's a burden. I should be able to participate in the traditions of Diwali during the day by going to temple, dressing up the house in dias and flowers, and making lots of delicious foods. I should not be expected to go to school for most of the day, then attend the puja at night while also having to turn in hours of homework. Not only does that make Hindus like myself feel burdens to be celebrating, but it also involuntarily detaches us from our heritage. My mother knew that growing up in a school where only three other kids in my whole grade looked like me would make me feel isolated and alone, and it did. Seeing my Jewish and Christian friends celebrate their holidays without having to feel guilty for missing school while I've had to prioritize my education over my religion has made me feel disconnected from my Hindu roots. India itself is the second-most populous nation in the world and is one of the fastest-growing populations in the United States, with more than 6 million South Asians who celebrate Diwali. As Sony Satvatiya Singh on CNN said, "The growing acknowledgement of the holiday in the U.S. is a marked shift for many first- and second-generation South Asian Americans who grew up celebrating the festival at home but rarely saw it acknowledged outside of their communities." Therefore, as we strive to make our district more diverse, the Asian community in Chappaqua is growing. As an Indian American, I ask of you that Diwali be recognized by the district. Thank you.
Hello. My name, oh, hello. My name is Mary Levine. I'm a freshman at Greeley and a member of the BSU. As previously discussed, we are pushing for the recognition of historically overlooked holidays with the cancellation of school on those days. These celebrations have been long disregarded. Not to excuse students from school would be to put them against their identities. There have been too many years of key parts of students' identities going unrecognized. The Chappaqua School District has an Asian population of 15.9. In 2020, it was declared that there were 435 members of the Asian community in Chappaqua. While not every, while not every Asian student partakes in these celebrations, there are still a number of people who are taking days off of a school that is mainly focused on grades. Missing even one day at Greeley can be crucial. Students and their future should not be at stake because they are celebrating a holiday. It goes without saying how much our district prioritizes grades, and the fact that students are worrying about making up work or rescheduling time to take a test instead of enjoying and celebrating holidays is simply unacceptable. Students shouldn't experience anxiety over missed work, and instead should be able to observe their culture and/or religion stress-free. A very large number of students have holidays they celebrate off, such as Christmas. A large number of students aren't all students. The students who celebrate said holidays will never have to experience that worrying and ask for days off to celebrate their holidays. As a student who celebrates one of the, one of the two predominant religions in this town, I've always been assured that my holidays were acknowledged. I cannot imagine having a school district whom I'm supposed to trust and admire treat my culture and observations with disregard. However, this is a reality for an amount of our student body. You could say, there's not going to be enough school days in the school year if we give time off. I urge you to find the time. As the heads of the district and supposed voices of our community that we elected to represent us, it is your job to help each and every student feel accepted and have their holidays protected and prioritized. We elected you all so that you could represent all of us, not just 79.57 of the district that follow two distinguished religions, but the whole 100%. Michelle L. Brennan with Psych Central dove deeper into this by saying in regards to the importance of commemorating holidays, quote, "They keep the memories of the past alive and help us share them with newer generations." While not every Asian student partakes in these celebrations, there are still a number of people who are taking days off of a school that is mainly focused on grades. Missing even one day at Greeley can be crucial. Students and their future should not be at stake because they are celebrating a holiday. It goes without saying how much our district prioritizes grades, and the fact that students are worrying about making up work or rescheduling time to take a test instead of enjoying and celebrating holidays is simply unacceptable. Students shouldn't experience anxiety over missed work, and instead should be able to observe their culture and/or religion stress-free. A very large number of students have holidays they celebrate off, such as Christmas. A large number of students aren't all students. The students who celebrate said holidays will never have to experience that worrying and ask for days off to celebrate their holidays. As a student who celebrates one of the two predominant religions in this town, I've always been assured that my holidays were acknowledged. I cannot imagine having a school district whom I'm supposed to trust and admire treat my culture and observations with disregard. However, this is a reality for an amount of our student body. You could say, "There's not going to be enough school days in the school year if we give time off." I urge you to find the time. As the heads of the district and supposed voices of our community that we elected to represent us, it is your job to help each and every student feel accepted and have their holidays protected and prioritized. We elected you all so that you could represent all of us, not just 79.57 of the district that follow two distinguished religions, but the whole 100%. Michelle L. Brennan with Psych Central dove deeper into this by saying in regards to the importance of commemorating holidays, quote, "They keep the memories of the past alive and help us share them with newer generations," end quote. Newer generations cannot grow up seeing and knowing that the heads of their district are apathetic regarding their identity and what they celebrate. Children should not have to see the people in charge of this district treat their holidays with resentment and detachment. Students are growing up feeling as if their beliefs are an inconvenience to their education. If our town won't recognize our holidays as important, how will students recognize themselves as important in this community? Students should not have to pick between their education and their culture. I appreciate you taking the time to listen to me. Thank you.
My name is Rishi Kumar. I'm currently a ninth grader at Horace Greeley, and I'm a proud member of the BSU and Sames, otherwise known as South Asian and Middle Eastern Society. I'm here to talk to you about Diwali as a holiday, why it is an important holiday for me and my fellow students to observe this day as a holiday. Diwali is one of the most important holidays for me, for myself, and many other Asian students. Hindus, Sikhs, Jains, and some Buddhist students of faith are just some of the many who celebrate this holiday. My parents are both immigrants from India and have brought this tradition of Diwali, the Festival of Lights, all the way to the United States. For me, Diwali was a joyous holiday that created many fond memories and helped me understand my roots and identity. However, over the years, I felt disconnected from my own traditions and heritage. Even though this festival should be as a prominent factor in my life and other Asians' lives, I feel like it has been a burden from all the schoolwork that must be done instead. I should be celebrating, making Indian food, painting dais, going to temple, and celebrating this holiday with my family. But oftentimes, I'm in school sacrificing my heritage and culture over schoolwork. Even though Diwali is equally important to Asians, similar to Christmas for Christians, we are still... We still aren't given the opportunity to connect with our cultures in the same way. It's hard for me to stick with my Indian traditions for the reason of being in a predominantly white town where different cultures and religions were not well-known. In fact, most of my teachers growing up didn't care about why I missed school on Diwali and often misunderstood my religion. In fact, in school, we would celebrate Christmas and Hanukkah. We would make ornaments in class and dreidels. Even though I learned about other heritage and cultures to better understand those who celebrate Christmas and Hanukkah, my holiday was never celebrated or taught about, even though there is a sizable number of Asians who celebrate Diwali within the school district. While many of my Christian and Jewish friends can relax and celebrate their culture, I have to prioritize my schoolwork over my personal values. This fact made me disheartened because I realized that I have to accept that my culture and heritage wouldn't be accepted in this community and school district, and this was how it was going to be. How can we say that the school claims to teach everyone about different races and cultures but overlooks important holidays amongst the student and faculty? As we strive to make our community more diverse and understand other cultures and heritage, we must understand that the Asian community among us is huge and only growing. I'm a first-generation Indian-American and very happy to see New York City recognizing Diwali as an official holiday. This also emphasizes that this is an important holiday in the Asian community. I, on behalf of my fellow Asian students in this community, sincerely ask of you that Diwali to be recognized by the district as an official holiday. Thank you for your time.
I'm a ninth grader in Horace Greeley, and I am in the BSU. Every year, children who celebrate holidays like Eid, Diwali, and Lunar New Year have their holidays pushed aside by the Board of Education. I was born in America as a child to two Turkish immigrants. As a younger child, it was hard for me to accept both my Turkish and American identity at the same time. I was often asked if I was Christian or Jewish, and when I'd answer neither, I'd be met with confusion. It was like being Muslim was unheard of. This made me feel like an outcast, since the majority of the school belonged to one of these two religions, but I didn't. Celebrating Eid, having family friends that were Turkish-American like me, being surrounded by my family, and eating food that connected me with my culture means a lot to me. Unfortunately, because of the fact that Eid is not a holiday that has school days off, I haven't been able to do that. I have limited memory of celebrating the holiday due to the fact that I take the valuable time I should be spending with those who share my culture and do homework that will just be thrown into the forgotten pile a few months later. And it's not just me that feels this way. The Asian population of CCSD is 15.9%, according to a survey done in 2022, and their holidays have also not been recognized. We feel it's very important to recognize these students who celebrate holidays like Diwali, Eid, and Lunar New Year because celebrating holidays are key parts to feeling connected with your culture. If we have time to take off for staff meetings, we have time to take off important holidays that many hold close to their hearts. Schools in New York City have an Asian population of 16.6% and only 0.7% more than ours, and they take off Eid. So if they can do it, why can't we? Giving students Lunar New Year, Eid, and Diwali off gives them the opportunity to create life-lasting, important memories that could not have been made otherwise. Sweeping these holidays under the rug in the name of education is telling these students that their holiday is an inconvenience, and nobody deserves to feel that way. Thank you for taking time to listen to me speak.
Oh, that's really tall, sorry. Hi, my name is Rachel Zhang, and I am both a founder and a current co-president of the Asian American Pacific Islander Association. And I want to open this up with a little bit about my own background. I am the child of immigrants, and I have grown up in a place where I now speak English most of the time, and I feel as though that there is often a cultural disconnect with myself and my family who lives in China, as oftentimes I can feel as though my own language and culture is slipping from me. And a part of this stems from the fact that I actually, like many of my peers had stated before, I have not taken off for Lunar New Year in now over five years. I felt as though it was important to prioritize my education and, in my 13-year-old mind, my future that was dependent on a biology quiz before my cultural heritage and who I am as a person. And now, these holidays are important to over an eighth of the school's population, really the district's population. And so, it is important to understand that we collectively deserve days off for holidays like this, just as our other peers do. We deserve to spend our time with our family, our friends, and our loved ones to reconnect with our traditions and our culture and our heritage. And when I come here and I speak to you about this, I not only come here as a student of this district, I come here as a person, as a human being, who is asking for the respect of having my culture and my heritage and who I am as a person to be seen and to be heard and to be understood. Thank you.
My name is Zoe Nabeel. I'm a member of the BSU, as well as a Muslim-American. I can now proudly say that, but for the first 12 years of my life, Muslim was not a part of that description. That was a part of my identity that I often felt I had to keep hidden away because it was just too difficult to explain to others. I hated having to see my peers' confused faces when they realized I didn't celebrate Christmas or Hanukkah. They had so many questions, and every question I was presented with, from "Then what do you celebrate?" to "What's Eid?", stripped away a piece of my identity, diminishing the immense pride I held for the traditions my family followed, from dressing up in colorful sullvar kameezes to eating my grandmother's biryani. I'd like to share a quote that sums up the sentiment many Asian students in Chappaqua have felt for their entire K-12 experience. "Change is painful, but nothing is as painful as staying stuck somewhere you don't belong." We want to learn and grow, but we are living in a community that isn't willing to learn and grow with us. That is why we are all here today, and I'd like to reiterate many of the facts you've heard and summarize all the powerful statements that have been presented tonight. We have one simple request, and it is for the board to reconfigure the district calendar to provide school off on four major Asian holidays in the 2023-2024 school year: Eid al-Fithar, Diwali, Lunar New Year, and Eid al-Oda. Providing school off on these holidays is vital in portraying the message that the Chappaqua Central School District values equity towards all the minorities and races that our school community represents. And Asian students make up a large majority, with the survey done by CCSD in 2022 showing that of our school demographics, Asian students are 15.9%, the largest minority group in our schools, factually proving that an immense population of students are observing these holidays. Additionally, it is essential for Chappaqua to follow the lead of neighboring districts who recognize these holidays. New York City Public Schools have school off on Eid al-Fithar, Eid al-Oda, Lunar New Year, and this past October, finalizing the plan to include Diwali as well. Now, many people could argue that New York City is a much larger school district than ours and most probably has a substantially greater Asian population, but this is a blatant misconception. The New York City Department of Education reports that the current demographic of Asian students in all New York City public schools is 16.6%, only totaling in at 0.7% higher than our population. To even further extend my point, Yonkers School District has school off on Eid al-Fithar and only has a 5.1% Asian population. CCSD's population is 10.8% greater than that of Yonkers. When I heard these percentages, it was incredibly aggravating to me to hear that we have a much larger Asian population than Yonkers, yet our school has not prioritized these holidays to our students. The other obstacle that schools often encounter when trying to take off these days is a misconception that in order to take off four days, we must also add four days to the end of the school year to fulfill the 180 days of instructional learning mandated by the state. But what you fail to understand is that education is more than just fulfilling the 180 state-required days of school. It's learning...
May I please have another minute? May I please have another minute?
We can... We will move to give her an additional minute. Motion. Can I have a second? All in favor? Okay, you may continue for one additional minute.
Thank you. It's learning that there is another mindset than yours and that the world consists of real people with real stories who come from different cultures, backgrounds, and faiths, that's something a textbook cannot teach you, but rather something every single student who showed up today and spoke is trying to teach you. To avoid tacking school days off on the end of the year, we have an incredibly simple solution that is often overlooked. We propose changing the current four superintendent conference days to be on the dates of these four holidays. This way, we can keep our current calendar without having to remove other holidays or add dates to the end of the school year. School board members and Dr. Ackerman, I deeply urge you to consider all that has been stated before you finalize the calendar for the 2023-2024 school year. It's time for CCSD to start recognizing every single Asian student who has ever felt their culture fading away from lack of acknowledgement. Giving our students off on these holidays is the first step. It's so much more than a day off. It lets the school community know that they deserve to have the quote-unquote "luxury" of not having to choose between their education and their beliefs, but it's not a luxury, it's a basic necessity. We have addressed your concerns and provided you with clear, thoughtful solutions. All that's left is the easiest job to act. Thank you for your time.
My name is Joyce Chen, and I am one of the co-presidents of the Greeley BSU. Before I start, I would like to say that I fully support the Asian Holidays Off Initiative. Today, I would like to take the time to discuss an incident that happened to me last week in order to ask for accountability and improvement going forward. Last Monday, I was sitting in the Chappaqua Library trying to start my homework when I overheard five middle school students shouting racial slurs, more specifically the N-word. Immediately, I went in to tell them to stop. Not only were they being disruptive and loud, but they were being racist. The librarian also heard the disruption and took down one boy's name. I sent an email about this situation, reporting it to the middle school principals and to the BSU executives and advisor, who I included only because I had already discussed it with them, and it made me feel less isolated and less alone in the effort. Additionally, I included the four district staff members, one of which is our superintendent, who were assigned the redistributed work of our former Equity, Inclusion, and Wellness Director. I detailed what happened, informed them of the name the librarian recorded, and hoped that the designated individuals assigned to this equity work would take over and resolve the case. Immediately, the superintendent kicked the situation...
Excuse me?
Yes?
I'm sorry. We cannot have... In according to our Board Policy 1005, you cannot discuss individuals, their performance, students identifying information, or incidents like that are not a proper discussion for public comment. That is prohibited public comment.
I haven't mentioned any identifying information.
You're about to discuss something that the superintendent did, so those are conversations that usually get discussed in the executive session amongst ourselves or something that is directly... Excuse me? I could not actually hear that...
Don't listen to it.
I could not hear you comment. Excuse me? Excuse me? I'm just stating that in terms of job performance or actions taken by personnel are not proper subject of public comment. That is prohibited by Board Policy 1005. So if you want to discuss something that happened to you, you may speak. You may not talk about the actions of any other individuals. Excuse me? I'm just trying to say what our policies are, so... Excuse... Excuse me? Excuse me? It is very important to us that our students and any individuals get to speak during public comment. I am going to make the community out here aware that to the extent that an incident is discussed that involves any of our personnel and any interaction with our personnel, that is not the proper subject of public comment, and I will have to put a stop to that. So I will allow you to continue if it does not talk about your interactions with district personnel. Please understand that. That is our policy. It applies to everyone. So go ahead. If it does not address that, you may go ahead.
I would like to say that the situation I underwent was extremely distressing for me as a student. It is hard to balance being advocate for yourself and for all your fellow students, in addition to being a student first and foremost. I deserve the right to focus on my education, just like every other student at Greeley. The interactions with the district left me in tears multiple times. I proceeded to cry in the school hallways afterwards, in front of teachers and students passing by. In school alone, that was the third time I had cried that week over how the administration handled the situation.
Excuse me?
I'm not mentioning what they did.
Excuse me? You are talking about district administration and how they handled a matter... No. Excuse me? Excuse me? I am applying our rules the way I apply to all individuals.
We can shut that conversation.
I'm gonna have to stop. Excuse me? Excuse me what? Please. Please. Joyce, are you able to continue? Everyone, just... Do you need to take a minute, and then you can come back up? Just, please.
I'm sensing a lack of humanity and empathy involved.
Excuse me? You know what? I have to... Excuse me? Excuse me? I understand the sentiments out there, but I have to put an end to this because it involves interactions with district personnel and is not the proper subject of a Board of Ed public comment, period. These are interactions that have been dealt with by certain individuals. They are dealt with, and we cannot let this continue in this manner. This was also an incident that was brought to the district's attention that did not take place on school property, and it has been being appropriately dealt with. Public comment is not the proper place to discuss this.
She's going to continue without the incident.
That is it. I am sorry. I do not like to see...
She's not talking about the incident any longer.
Excuse me? I do not like to see a student upset. It is heartbreaking, and I am sorry, but this is not the appropriate forum for this discussion.
Thank you. I can finish it, if that's okay.
Ms. Chen, if you are able to continue and can wrap up your statement that does not mention any district personnel or any interaction or any other individual, students, or anyone else, you may go ahead. If you cannot, I understand that.
I would like to state that your students of color are hurting. Your communities of color are tired. Personally, I am exhausted. I'm asking for accountability and improvement in the future. I'm asking for a system that does not punish the student upstanders, for communication that centers the hurt student's experience, and for an Equity, Inclusion, and Wellness expert in each school to guide conversations. expert in each school to guide conversations and next steps. I'm asking you to recognize the students of color in your district and the pain they have to endure. I'm asking you to act. Thank you.
Sorry, I, I feel sorry, I'm, I'm a first time speaking in public, and Cindy and Joyce are my daughters. I feel part of them. The one word I wanted to say is, policy is a policy, and we want their voice be heard. They're so young, they experience in this, you know, in this society, and a lot of things, she, they just don't want to stand up to stop hatred, and they don't want to, people see the N-word, they just, this is what they want to do. I think the Board of Educator, Education, to stand up, support them, to prevent this happening again. Okay, thank you very much. One more. We understand the policy, but the policy is decided by people, okay? Policy can change too. Thank you.
My name is Ava Herman, I'm a sophomore at Greeley, and I'm the Vice President of BSU. The mission of BSU is to provide a safe space for students of color who understand our experiences, and in BSU, we listen and support each other. After this incident went down, I told Joyce that I was sorry that she went through this, that I supported her, and that I was proud of her for saying something. This is a level of empathy and respect that is necessary when approaching a racist and traumatic experience. It is unfortunate that this is not being handled the way that it should be, and that it's only adding to her distress because her thoughts and feelings are being completely neglected. It is no surprise why students are scared to speak up. These processes are why your students and families of color feel unsupported. It is not the role of students to understand the internal bureaucracy of reporting hate within our school district. We deserve to be heard, we deserve to be respected, and we deserve our voice to be amplified.
Hi, I'm Cindy Topio, and I'm speaking on behalf of Rihanna Dada, who's a sophomore and secretary...
Wait, I'm sorry, excuse me, I couldn't, I couldn't hear that.
I'm speaking on behalf of Rihanna Dada, she's Secretary of the BSU. When I heard that there were five Chapua boys shouting the N-word in the library... All right. I was also CC'd on the previous, previously mentioned email. Yes, one second, please. Okay. I was also CC'd on the previously mentioned email and was pulled out of class to talk about it. There, I was explained about the process of reporting something and how to go about it. Like Ava said, the redacted administration member told us all the reasons why what Joyce did was wrong. But did she really know any better? To be clear, I fully understand that it was protocol to call us into the office, and I understand. The situation was stressful for everyone involved, no doubt, but it could have been avoided. We're told to report anything we think we should, but never taught how to. How is a student going to be put in such a trying situation just for reporting a racist event, and have to meet with so many people over it when she's already overwhelmed with her own life? If we still had an EIW director, people would have someone to go to. We would have checked all the boxes and just speaking to one person, and that person would be a POC and would sympathize, sympathize with us, and understand our perspective, rather than further stressing the reporter out. I remember at the last board meeting, there was a slide mentioning how many hate speech reports there have been, and how small that number was. I remember being shocked and surprised, because I myself know for a fact that my friends have faced more than that on a daily basis. However, I now understand why the number is so low. It's events like this that make the number so low. The number isn't a reflection of the anti-racist beliefs of Chapua, it's a reflection on the poor education on how to report correctly and the fear of reporting because of it. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Lily Brown, I'm a sophomore at Greeley and a member of the BSU.
I'm sorry, do you mind stepping closer to the mic so we could hear you better? Thank you.
Yeah. Hi, my name is Lily Brown, I'm a sophomore at Greeley and a member of the BSU. Today, I will be expanding on the first point of the BSU wishlist, which is the importance and immediate need for a Director of Equity, Inclusion, and Wellness, plus the need for a DEI expert in each school building. As students of color, who do we turn to after experiencing a traumatic event, who will not only listen to our stories but relate to them? We should not have to explain why our peers' words are hurtful and how deeply they can affect us. It is not our job to prove to someone why our feelings are valid. In order to ensure the safety and comfort of our students, we need a long-term and stable plan. We emphasize the importance of hiring and expanding this role, as the experience Joyce had is unfortunately not uncommon. And we must remember that these are real students. In Joyce's story, having a person dedicated to this work would be able to provide support in a way that validated our individual needs. The first active step wouldn't be to tell our students what they could have done better, but instead, center the hurt students' experience and make sure that their well-being is protected. An expert will help those of us who feel alone and scared to give us humanity and moral support rather than criticism, to provide insight to those not trained in DEI work so that they can handle situations like these appropriately. It is unacceptable for our lives and well-being to be threatened, all because our district does not prioritize our needs. In order to support students of color on a daily basis, we need someone who is trained in DEI work to act as a leader for other individuals trained for this work. Without a dedicated person for diversity, equity, and inclusion, the effort is diluted. Since Joyce was sent to her school, which was insensitive to her pain, it is obvious that we need a DEI expert in each building to help guide these situations. The district owes us better than what it currently provides. I am a 15-year-old girl standing here in front of you all, incredibly vulnerable, begging for a change, begging for you to care because this is the reality of our lives. How can I focus on my education if I do not feel safe or feel as if my concerns will not be met? I am here tonight because I care, not only about my future, but for the future of our current and incoming students. I will admit that right now I am scared, but I know that I need to be brave in order for my future to be safe and secure. We urge you not to run away from accountability, but to be brave as us and do what is right. Show us how you care with your actions and not your words. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Emma Wasserman, I'm a junior at Greeley and a member of the BSU. I would like to talk about how the Equity, Inclusion, and Wellness work must be expanded in order for equitable goals to not only be reached but to be sustainably upheld as well. I was not directly involved in the, in the events described by my preceding speakers, but it was seemingly clear that the steps taken did not demonstrate an effective plan to adequately and compassionately resolve whatever occurrences were detailed. It is apparent that there was harm felt and distrust instilled as a result of what may have happened, and even though this is not what was the intended impact, this is still what was felt. It is important to acknowledge that it is also an effect of this incident, that the effects of this incident did not just end with the people who were directly impacted or talked about it, but it extended far beyond those who were in email chain or pulled out of class. The rest of the members of the BSU sat around to listen to a firsthand recap, hearing not from just your soon-to-be graduated students, but from our incredible and close friends about how they were made to feel disrespect in spite of the courage that they were shown, and their hurt spread to us all, their hurt spread to the rest of your student body. Each other's student, friend, parent I relayed the story to was left disappointed, if not appalled, and confused. There was not leadership trained nor ready to maintain the safety and well-being of students in this manner. In terms of the intent of our administration, I'm sure there was no aim to cause additional harm, but that was still the impact. It is crucial that the intent and the impact of the Chapua Central School District line up, and this starts with acknowledging that there are still blind spots, and that we all don't know what we don't know. It seems that we need leadership to help shine a light on these shortfalls. We're asking for courage and support and empathy and for respect for all of us. This is the only way to ensure that our community achieves the equity that all of us here want and need. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Emma Ramirez, I am a junior at Greeley, a member of the BSU, and Secretary for the Organization of Latin American Students. I appreciate you all taking your time to listen to us students discuss the importance of this role, and today I will be discussing how a person of color needs to be hired for the Equity, Inclusion, and Wellness role. Feeling safe and valued at school is crucial to learning, as has been proven not only by research, but by our very own Greeley students who have stood up here and told us all how some of their experiences have negatively impacted their learning. And promoting a sense of belonging in students continues with hiring an Equity, Inclusion, and Wellness Director that can properly connect with students and train teachers on helping students feel like they matter. Anyone can relate to the experience of explaining something you have been through to someone who hasn't been through it themselves. You can explain to someone who hasn't had, say, a broken leg before, how excruciating the pain is and how difficult your daily life in crutches becomes, but until they actually go through it themselves, you know that they will never fully comprehend your experience. Similarly, I have spent 16 years of my life in classes full of students and staff who don't look like me, suppressing the pit in my stomach and speaking through the lump in my throat about experiences that the teachers I am speaking to have never faced, trying desperately to make my white peers understand where I'm coming from. I've swallowed my discomfort for this long because I felt that I was obligated to speak to the issues we were discussing just because they related to me. So it was an enormous relief to walk into my first BSU meeting, and instead of responses to my stories being, "I'm sorry that happened," I was met with a chorus of me-tos. And by no means were we simply getting together to share sob stories. We were sharing our experiences so that we could work to enact real change. Nonetheless, the tension that came from suppressing the feeling of not belonging was released when I found out that other students just like me were, were, um, students just like me had gone through the same issues. At these meetings, I looked at a sea of nodding heads, not just from peers who were trying to understand, but from those who actually did. Sympathy from an educator is of course important. I have had many teachers who have been incredible leaders, incredible teachers, who have not had firsthand experiences of the experiences that I've gone through. But empathy and having the personal experience to connect with students of color is necessary as well, especially for this role. Though they can mean well, an educator or advisor who cannot personally connect to the experiences of students of color cannot properly understand and therefore help in fighting the hate that people of color experience to the fullest extent. Already, I have seen firsthand the impact an EIW director of color can have on the lives of students of color. Mr. Marcus not only worked on discussing race at the faculty level, but he has also personally connected with students of color, giving them someone they could trust to help them deal with issues concerning race. He was someone that wouldn't make students feel like they had to prove their identity, or prove why a racist statement hurt them, or prove that an incident even occurred before they were even allowed to feel their emotions. Students of color in the Chapua School District deserve and require someone who is authentically dedicated to the role of EIW director so that we can all create and sustain a healthy learning environment and therefore succeed in our classes the way all students should be encouraged and assisted in doing. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Asha Colletal. I'm a freshman and a member of the BSU. Our district needs to hire more educators of color. Having BIPOC teachers is vital in so many ways. Our students of color desperately need a person we can turn to, a person of color who we can connect to. All of us, all we have are white teachers in the staff to go to when tough situations arise. However, they won't be able to empathize with students. And personally, I wouldn't feel comfortable sharing my experience with them, simply because they would not be able to relate. I would feel the need to explain myself and have to sit there, and have to sit there while I'm told that I'm overreacting and taking it too far, which is all things my white teachers have told me when I've confided in them. With another person of color, I wouldn't have to explain my distress. As much as I enjoy being an advocate for the students of color in our district, just like Joyce said, I am student-first. I'm not a representative for the entire BIPOC community. Just because I am a person of color, it does not mean that I'm a trained expert in DEI work. But I'm, but I'm here doing as much as I can. But I'm here doing as much as I can because, because I'm hoping by the time new students come in, there will actually be representatives who are eager to help. But my willingness to help my community when we have no one else should not be taken advantage of. I'm a 14-year-old girl. If you told me seven months ago when I was in middle school that I would be in front of you all today being this vulnerable, I would have called you crazy. I have spent countless hours preparing for this board meeting and the previous, while my peers are spending their time doing their math homework. Why should I have to apologize from having to choose between my education and my identity? BIPOC teachers are imperative to the well-being of our students, but also to educate others. Plus, with an EIW director, they would be able to support our BIPOC teachers in educating those around us. Out of our 26 members in our district Equity Team, the majority of them are white. And how is this majority-white team with an excruciatingly small number of people of color supposed to support all of us? This team is composed of white people leading white people on issues surrounding race and diversity. It is quite literally the blind leading the blind. As I was writing the speech, I was trying to recount the number of teachers of color I've had, and I stopped because that is not something I should have to do. Some of the district's findings show that there have been more staff members of color hired recently. I would just like to emphasize the staff of color. This doesn't mean the teachers in classrooms who are actually talking to and making real connections with students of color. While we acknowledge the importance of every staff member, there is a lack of diversity in our educational staff. Having a teacher of color would allow me the opportunity to have a conversation about race in a comfortable setting that I'm familiar with. This is also important because if an incident were to occur during class, my teacher would be able to understand how I was feeling, but also properly correct the situation. Having a teacher of color would make me feel exponentially more comfortable and represented in the faculty. It is disheartening and exhausting having to talk about race and inclusion in a room full of white people just staring at me, willing me to say something. I remember, I remember coming into elementary school, not knowing why I didn't look like my white teachers and peers. On one of my first days of school in Chapua, a classmate approached me asking if I could give them the N-word pass. The following year...
Can I request another minute?
Can I have a motion to add an additional minute? Ryan, can I have a second? Kaylee? Okay, you may continue for one additional minute.
The following year, someone asked me if Gandhi was my grandpa. After that, I was called the name of another Indian girl in my class for an entire semester. I reported this comment to my white teacher, and she said, and I quote, "Let it go, you guys do look a little bit alike." After that, I never reported or talked about the aggressions I faced. I always felt like nothing would happen, and any teacher I talked to would say the same thing. They would tell me to let it go because my experiences did not matter. In this situation, if we had BIPOC teachers trained in DEI work, I wouldn't have felt as, I wouldn't have felt as small and belittled, and maybe I would have appreciated my culture and at an earlier age, and not felt as though being a person of color was embarrassing and something I should just ignore. Hiring more teachers of color reflects positively on all students regardless of the student's race. We could have, we could have used more staff members of color or those educated on DEI work. We are asking you to hire more educators of color. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Cassiopeus Sands. I'm a junior at Greeley and I'm a member of the BSU. Today, I've listened to my peers talk about an experience they had last week where they stood up to racism and got chastised and silenced by the district for doing what was right. It's truly disappointing how we're at a point where you have five boys yelling racial slurs in a public library, and then the students who are brave enough to assert themselves and tell those boys to stop are the ones who get shamed and silenced. This incident is a shining example of how the culture regarding race and inequity in the Chapua Central School District desperately needs to change. Our students who are going to school to learn and to be their best selves can never do so in an environment... in an environment where bigots are not held accountable for their shameful actions. With this in mind, it's clear that returning Unity Day to a full day of programming is the least that we can do. By creating an open forum for discussion, critical thinking, and most importantly, by fostering empathy and inclusion, we contribute to a culture at Greeley where students know and care that their bigotry hurts people. What's more, Unity Day has shown itself to be a major force for good. In February, there were twenty available student-led breakout rooms, and in June, there were seventeen. This December, there were forty-three, which was more than the last two combined. Student engagement with diversity and equity work has skyrocketed, but by keeping Unity Day to ninety-five minutes, administration is severely curtailing the BSU's ability to create positive change. Many student attendees have come to the BSU telling us about how they wanted to explore more of the topics presented, but were limited to choosing just one. So why are we stamping out the blooming seeds of curiosity, education, and empathy, especially in our school district where incidences of hatred are so painfully common? There's one last thing I want to mention. If you looked online, you'd think that National Inclusive Schools Week is the biggest thing in the world for the CCSD. On the Horace Greeley High School website, the first picture you see when you enter the site is one of Unity Day presenters. There's a whole section on the site just dedicated to Inclusive Schools Week. And meanwhile, the actual Unity Day has been compressed into an hour and a half. So when it actually comes down to it, when the school district actually has the opportunity to raise National Inclusive Schools Week to its full potential, it doesn't. The Chappaqua Central School District has co-opted the student-led Unity Day, commercialized the event, and has begun to dismantle it, all for PR and reputation. We have seen this happen throughout history with countless examples of white paternalism, and we see it happening in front of us right now. If we want to present ourselves in this way, we have to give it substance by actually allocating time for this inclusivity work. You want to talk the talk, so it's high time you walk the walk.
Hi, I would just like to preface this with the fact that some of you...
Excuse me, I'm sorry, did you speak previously?
Yeah, but can I please have thirty seconds of your time?
No, we cannot have someone. That is just our policy. I'm very sorry, but that is applied evenly across the board. We do not have people come up and make a second comment. That is not allowed. I'm so sorry. If you wish to submit something, you can certainly email or give it to our clerk, but we can't have people come up more than one time. I'm very sorry.
This is just a quick statement.
Excuse me?
This is just a quick statement.
Wait, I'm sorry. Can you just state your name, though?
Yeah, sure.
Thank you. I'm sorry for any confusion just with the lights. It's very difficult to see up here, so my apologies, but go ahead and state your name.
My name's Miriam Cece. This is just a statement on behalf of the crowd. It is not the responsibility of a student to understand the policy that was never communicated to anyone. That type of bureaucracy completely misses the bigger picture and ends up punishing the hurt student. Protocols and communications like these are actively silencing our students. We are taught to report injustice, not to worry about the internal bureaucracy of reporting hate within our school district. The entire system needs to be reframed to center the hurt student's experience and to focus on restorative approach.
Hi, my name is Miriam Cece. I'm a junior at Greeley and co-president of the BSU. As stated previously, BSU is in full support of AIPIA's Asian Holidays Off Initiative. I stand here tonight not only to conclude the points made by my peers and club members, but also to point out the significance of this transitional period of our district. These are the moments which decide the future of our community. We ask for your support in reinstating our only in-school program which promotes diversity, equity, and inclusion and educates on matters to race, referring to race, to a full day. This Unity Ninety-Five, I had multiple students with varying identities come up to me and tell me how strongly they resonated with my presentation on microaggressions and the female experience. But there was one moment in particular which stuck with me. After my presentation, I had received a message from a white male peer which read, "I apologize for saying I don't see color. I didn't realize how that statement came off. I just watched the presentation on microaggressions and it made me think." Although it seems small, moments like these are monumental for a racially illiterate district. Being able to not only identify microaggressions, but make steps towards stopping them is what leads us to build a student body of global citizens in a safe environment which CCSD schools promise. We not only ask for your support, but for you to take accountability and rehire for the Equity, Inclusion, and Wellness Director. What happened to Joyce was not an isolated incident. It reminded me of a similar experience of racial intimidation with admins. In sixth grade, I had gotten into an argument with a close friend of mine. I remember she said verbatim, "Your skin looks like feces." Looks like the dirt on the bottom of my shoe. Despite the fear I felt, I went to a trusted admin and told them about what had happened. Once I met with the assistant principal, an endless cycle of gaslighting had begun and ended with three white administrators telling me I was lying and that there was nothing they could do about the accusations. That moment impacted my life significantly. I wasn't able to speak up about the racism I or my peers were experiencing for three years, despite witnessing verbal and physical racial assaults. Unfortunately, the majority of adults in Chappaqua lack the knowledge, skills, and awareness needed to talk thoughtfully about race and racism. They are not trained in DEI work, and they are not experts. We need a trained person of color with a strong foundation to prevent moments like these. Students should not be able to bond because of racial traumas caused from a place where they're made to be and from people who they are told to trust. Last meeting, you stated that you needed community feedback before deciding to rehire for the EIW role, even though you automatically rehire for roles such as Director of Athletics, Director of Tech, and so on and so forth. Anyways, we put together a petition which has gotten more than seven hundred signatures of students, faculty, parents, and community members asking for the rehiring of the Equity Director.
I can't see. Okay, we're over?
We have like thirty seconds.
Okay. Can I have a motion for one additional minute? Hillary, second. Ryan, all in favor? Okay, you have one additional minute.
Okay. I was just gonna say thank you for your time.
All right, sorry. Sorry about the...
Miriam, if you have a petition, can you give it to Mrs. Elsner?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, my name is Sharna Banerji, and I am a parent of two students at Grafflin. I was five or six when Abby Mooseman told me, "My dad said you're the wrong color." Her dad was my soccer coach. I can still feel the shock that coursed through me, the fear, the confusion, the sadness. It would be the first of many such incidents I personally faced in the small Missouri town I grew up in, where my family and another made up the bulk of a handful of residents of color. It has led to an adulthood fraught with social anxiety, where I hesitate to enter a room or conversation without knowing for sure that a friendly face will be there. I am dismayed to hear that students in this town that touts itself as progressive are facing the same hostility and isolation that I did decades ago in a very different environment. I beseech this community to confront the reality of multiple incidents of racism taking place in this town in just the last six months. Our response from all corners should be a resounding and unequivocal denunciation of racism. Period. There is no reasoning that holds water from "kids will be kids" to "that's life" unless we accept that the health and well-being of all residents in this town does not matter. That isolated incidents are inevitable and should be swept aside as unimportant as long as they don't affect you. Given the TikTok incident several years ago now, it surprises and concerns me that a clear protocol is not in place to support and comfort a student in distress who reaches out to the adults in her school environment. That such bravery should be met with cold belittlement is unconscionable. As a parent of two young children in the district, I ask that administrators carefully and thoughtfully create and share clear guidelines on how racist and discriminatory behavior will be addressed and condemned. Performative appointments and lists of resources are useless if they fail at the first test because there is no training or expertise built up behind them. Please, get the DEI work in this district in order. Make it a priority so all of the students and residents in this district can thrive, knowing that here in Chappaqua, we do not stand for hate or discrimination of any kind. And I just want to say to the students, you are not alone. And I encourage you to look beyond this community when it feels small and suffocating. This is not the be-all and end-all of the world, and the social conscience of the future is with you. Thank you.
My name is Kimberly Carey. I'm a member of the CRE, but I'm here as a Chappaqua parent. I have a daughter who is currently at Horace Greeley. The situation at the library and the way it was handled is deeply disturbing to me. I would like to provide some background. In the past, I've had horrible experiences with CCSD. At the time, I had two children in the district. My experience was primarily due to the then-abysmal Department of Special Ed. The difficulties I had during my son's time here were atrocious, and that's putting it mildly. For that reason, I removed my daughter from the CCSD after fourth grade. I must commend you, however, because over the past few years, you've cleared the former special ed staff out and have put in a completely new roster of individuals from the top down who seem to be putting the student at the forefront of what they do. In short, they are doing exactly what they should be doing, and they seem to be doing it well. As a result, I took a chance on returning my daughter to the CCSD as a sophomore at Horace Greeley. And despite her challenges, she seems to be flourishing under the guidance of the new group of special ed professionals here. However, I'm extremely worried due to the most recent racial incident which occurred at the library. My own daughter is BIPOC. And the last thing I want to see is that while her academic environment is finally attending to her needs appropriately, the school district is putting her emotional environment at risk. It is necessary that the school district provide an environment of safety, security, and understanding to these students. They are going through many things on a daily basis that challenge their confidence, their self-image, and emotional and social well-being, simply by virtue of their age. They should not be made to feel victimized simply for standing up against racism or discrimination of any kind. Due to their tender emotional stage, it is imperative that there be a person in place in the school district, in each school in fact, who is trained in how to deal with and manage such situations. A Director of Equity and Inclusion who is accountable to both the students and the school district. Someone who can reinforce these students' sense of security while addressing their feelings of victimization. Our children all deserve to have dignity, including when confronting bigotry. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Sean Smith. Firstly, since no one else said it, Joyce, I'm sorry. For all. I'm sorry to the BSU for what you've had to endure, and I'm thankful. My daughter's in the crowd up here, and we're all thankful for you. I'm gonna speak on behalf of the CREI first, and then I'm gonna speak as a parent. First, the CREI stands in complete solidarity with the BSU, as I said, and we are in full support of your mission. Secondly, the CREI has been made aware of the incident involving hate speech that took place at the Chappaqua Public Library. And we've been looking into both the response by the library and the school district. All Newcastle residents should be free from the discrimination and harassment in our shared spaces. The library especially should be a haven for our residents, one where any visitor can expect to be treated with respect and ensuring a safe environment and it's crucial that there is a plan and accountability for enforcement of the rules of common decency, as well as the rules of the institution itself. We hope to confirm the details of any such protocols in an effort to make these policies and procedures transparent to both the community and all Newcastle residents. Finally, the CRE would like to offer ourselves as a resource to all of the town residents, especially the BSU, around issues of race, equity, and inclusion. We have an email which you could reach us at, which is crei@mynewcastle.org, and of course, you can find it on the website. Now I'll shift to speaking as a parent. I lived in Japan for a little over two years. It was the first time in my life that as a white man, I was the minority. I learned firsthand what it was to be the outsider, to be looked at differently, to be treated differently, and to have people just gaze at you because you were walking around. And I can tell you, even in those two long years, I can't possibly comprehend what it is to live like that every day. And that's what our kids do. They live it every single day. I sat in this meeting last month and I realized I'm failing as a parent, I'm failing as a resident, and I'm failing as a leader. I'm failing as a parent that my children live in a community where the BIPOC committee, community, excuse me, of which my family is a part of, doesn't feel represented and supported in our schools. I'm failing as a resident that I haven't appeared before this committee to speak before about this issue. And I'm failing simply as a leader that I've allowed this to happen to anybody. Simply stated, we all need to be better. I had planned to talk a little bit about the DEI role, but it's pretty clear to me that you are in progress on that, so we'll see how that goes and we'll revert to that later. The past meeting, I also heard the impact that Philip had on our students. You listened to them, but frankly, I'm not sure all of you heard them. During the speeches, there were subtle microaggressions, misgendering, shuffling of papers, looking away. May I have one more minute, please?
Can I have a motion to give him an additional minute? Hillary, may I have a second? All in favor?
Thank you. Subtle and not-so-subtle expressions and things such as "don't come up on my stage", even this evening, as I watched you, as some of these students spoke, you looked at your phones, you looked at your computers, and you didn't give them the full attention that they deserved. I was amazed, absolutely amazed, by the students when they spoke, but I was even more distraught by that behavior. Philip empowered them to speak up and speak about their own lives. It's your responsibility to hear that. Frankly, it's all of our responsibility to hear that. We are not, we are here, we are here for our kids. It's not their responsibility to do this work. It's ours. Martin Luther King said, "We must remember that intelligence is not enough. Intelligence plus character, that is the goal of true education. The complete education gives one not only the power of concentration, but worthy objectives upon which to concentrate. The broad education will therefore transmit, one, not only the accumulated knowledge of race, but also the accumulated experience of social living." Of all things, I'm certain he was much better at this than any of us. Thank you.
I have been inspired by the courage and eloquence of the students who stood up to speak. And at the last meeting, I was honored to...
I'm sorry, can you give your name for us?
Yes, my name's Alicia Spillman. And I was honored to share my friend's words at the last meeting, and today I'm ready to share my own. I'm happy to live in a district where we're talking about inclusion and we're talking about anti-racism, but we can do better, much better. Our district needs to do more than talk. Teachers and administrators need training. Curriculum needs examining and adjusting, and students need support. Our district has undergone two audits that take a critical look at where our district stands in regards to DEI, Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, and its special education programs. The audits uncovered and highlighted areas of great need. Both audits stated the need for vision, leadership, and professional development as necessary parts of attaining a truly inclusive and equitable environment for all students. The DEI position is about race, anti-racism, and social justice, but it's also about wellness, identity, and belonging. It's about seeing and including all students with a focus on those that have been marginalized, those who have been unseen and unheard. That position is just a first step. As a parent and as a teacher, I know that having a sense of belonging is crucial for a truly inclusive environment, no matter your race, your gender identity, your abilities, your disabilities, your socioeconomic status. And I'm here tonight to share my personal experience and to advocate for our district to hire and support a Director of Wellness and DEI to lead our district forward and a supportive team of professionals, trained counselors focused on this work at each building. There's too much work to be done, to put it just on teachers and administrators that already have a full load of work to do. Our district needs to make systematic changes...
Our district needs to make systematic changes, changes that will impact students, curriculum, and staff. Tonight, I speak to you as an educator, as a Chapacaw alum, as the parent of four students in the district, but specifically as the parent of a child who left this district because she couldn't find the feeling of belonging and inclusion here. Some of you might remember me. Last year, I emailed you from the emergency room. One year ago, my family, which was already struggling with navigating the realities of a mental health crisis for our daughter, were further traumatized by the administration at the middle school. My daughter felt so out of place at school - I'm not mentioning any specific people - felt so out of place at school, such a lack of belonging that she would do anything to get out of school, including lying about hurting herself in a school bathroom. After talking to school staff, she was safe at school for two hours, and we weren't called. She was safe, and the school called - the district, sorry. The district called the police and an ambulance before they called my family. An administrator called to me and lied to me about what happened. He told me my daughter had hurt herself when he knew that she did not. Administrators? May I have one more minute, please?
I'll move to give her another minute. Can I have a second? All in favor? You may have one additional minute.
Thank you. Administrators stood around my daughter and put her in an ambulance when we had clearly communicated that if there were any concerns about her safety, that they'd call us or contact her doctor. Police arrived at my house, further traumatizing my husband and my other children. To this day, thinking about the middle school and the people and the communication makes me feel sick. We were all traumatized by our experience. While my experience does not pertain to race, it pertains to wellness, inclusion, and belonging. At both the elementary school and the middle school, my daughter felt as if she didn't belong. Our family's experience serves to highlight another example of the need for this district to do better, to make time and set a priority to care about and care for the mental health, inclusion, and belonging that our children have every day when they go to school. Our district needs to rehire a director of wellness and DEI, hire staff specifically to move this work forward, to collaborate with human resources, pupil personnel, the director of special ed, so that every child in our district knows that they belong. Thank you for listening.
Hi. Hi. My name is Christina Herman. I'm a parent of two high schoolers. First to Joyce. Sorry, I don't know where you are. Many parents here know your story and support you. I'm sorry that what you were put through. And it's incredible that you and all your fellow students are here tonight. Second, I want to say to our students that it is my hope that you don't feel the need to come to these meetings again. I wish that you can just be students, focus on your studies, think about plans with friends. I wish you didn't feel this burden, but hearing you tonight reminds us that there are lots of holes in our district procedures, policies, and there's much work to do. There was a recent incident of hate speech at the Chapacaw Library, and with the departure of our director of DEI, a few things come to mind. First, what is said in meetings like this, such as "we are dedicated to this work," unfortunately doesn't translate to the day-to-day experiences once we leave this room. Joyce reported a hate speech incident. Since then, she has felt punished, hassled, and unsupported by the district. Second, it is obvious we need a director of DEI to focus on professional development and another DEI expert who is accessible to students and families. Third, no one understands what the process of reporting a racist incident is. We need a clear process that is communicated to students, family, and staff. We should not have the reporting student feel bad or burdened in any way. Fourth, the Chapacaw Library is like a black hole. What is the process when an incident occurs in that space? Will anyone investigate? Those are code of conduct apply in a student-centric environment where our school taxes apply. Fifth, while you search for a new hire, I don't expect anyone or everyone here to be experts in DEI, and just because you're a person of color doesn't make you an expert in DEI. Sixth, the mental health and emotional wellness of our kids are at stake, so I feel an interim DEI expert or consultant who is accessible to students is needed. Interim support is typically provided in athletics or other director-level roles. I don't want our kids to feel - be without support as you look for a new candidate. And finally, I support the AAPI Club's idea of honoring Asian holidays. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Barrett Flom. I'm a parent of a kindergartner in the district. I'm speaking tonight to follow up on Joyce's time earlier and do my best to convey the issues that she tried to highlight during her time. I first want to thank Joyce for sharing her story with me, and I hope that I can do some of it justice. And first, while Ms. Shepherdson alluded to the appropriate response by the district that misses the point entirely, while the policies of the district may or may not have been followed, that doesn't matter in these situations because the policies and the systems are flawed. Rather than recognizing the incident was indicative of a wider problem, it was directed to the school level only. Furthermore, the procedure to obtain statements treating students standing up to racism without flexibility was wrong. The fact that this was occurring during Inclusion Week is appalling. And Ms. Chen, as Ms. Chen planned to say during her time before it was derailed, "The students and the parents are asking for accountability, improvement, and a system that does not punish student upstandards, but instead centers communication around the hurt students." These incidents further proof of the necessity of the diversity, inclusion, and equity, and wellness professional that needs to be replaced in this district. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Shakufir Jabzadeh. I'm an Iranian-American Muslim and a parent of Chapacaw - of students who will be - kids who will be in the Chapacaw School District next - starting next year. This is the mission of this Chapacaw School District as written on the website. "The mission of the Chapacaw Central School District is to create a community for learning, where students, parents, and staff are joined in the pursuit of academic excellence and personal growth in a caring environment. We seek to develop each student's full potential through a challenging curriculum, a diversified faculty, and a commitment to intellectual freedom. We will teach basic skills, foster creative and critical thinking, and provide a foundation for lifelong learning. We will nourish our students' emotional lives and guide their social development, instilling in them an appreciation of self-worth, of individual difference, and of global interdependence. We will help them learn how to manage freedom and to act ethically so that each may become a responsible, contributing member of society." It is absolutely clear to me based on the comments that were made tonight that students do not feel - especially BIPOC students - do not feel nourished or cared for, that they do not feel that people are invested in acting ethically on their behalf. It is evident that students of color do not recognize diversified faculty. If powers-that-be, which seems to be what we have to use in replace of other labels, have made students feel that what they say is unimportant, it seems increasingly to me that this is because it is. In fact, I'm going to reread this mission based on who among the student body it seems to centralize, and I think if it makes us uncomfortable, we should ask why. "The mission of the Chapacaw Central School District is to create a community for learning for white, able-bodied students. Parents and staff of white, able-bodied students are joined in the pursuit of academic excellence and personal growth in a caring environment. We seek to develop each white, able-bodied student's full potential through a challenging curriculum, a diversified faculty, and a commitment to intellectual freedom. We will teach basic skills, foster creative and critical thinking, and provide a foundation for lifelong learning for white, able-bodied students. We will nourish our white, able-bodied students' emotional lives and guide their social development, instilling in them an appreciation of self-worth, of individual difference, and of global interdependence. We will help white, able-bodied students learn how to manage freedom and to act ethically so that each may become a responsible, contributing member of society. There are incredible leaders in this room, but they are seated at the margins of this room, and if they have thrived so far here, it seems to me that it's not because of, but in spite of, the work that's being done." Thank you.
Hi. Nishat Haddari, parent in the district. First of all, I just want to say that I stand with the AAPI students and their initiative for having the four Asian holidays off, so I really hope that the board and the administration considers that while they're working on their calendar. Based on what everything has happened tonight, I just want to say that I'm an immigrant. I grew up being a model minority, and for anybody who doesn't know what that is, that is staying in your lane, not complaining, moving on, ignoring any forms of racism. My kids call this surviving. My kids and all these kids here want to thrive, not survive, and they shouldn't have to. These kids shouldn't have to be the model minority to attend Chapacaw schools. Thank you.
Hi, good night. My name is Dr. Barbara Durandis Goldberg. I have two boys in the district, and we're a new family here. I heard the statements last month, and I just wanted to say to the students, "Thank you for your bravery. We see you, and we're here for you." But what are they doing here? Why is this even up for debate? The science is clear. Students who learn about different cultures about education - different cultures during their education - feel more comfortable and safe when these differences occur later in life. This allows them to feel more confident when interacting in a wide social group. The research also says that students work better in diverse environments, enabling them to concentrate and push themselves further. So to those who feel that DEI work is a waste of time, here's the reality. In a few decades, the minority population will become the majority. So how are we fully preparing our students for life? We have abundant sources, we have high-tech facilities, we have rigorous curriculums, but some of our kids don't know that they shouldn't say the N-word in public settings? Focusing on academics and sports is just not enough. We have to continue to diversify the curriculum, starting early in education. Otherwise, we are just pumping out future professionals who won't be able to relate to their clients, to their customers, to their patients, to their constituents. How can they compete in the global market when they can't even treat their own classmates with civility? What kind - what kind of examples are some teachers setting when they make denigrating remarks in class? Comments about the smell of an Asian child's food in kindergarten? These incidents clearly have long-lasting psychological effects, not just for that student, but the other students are victimized as well when they see that this kind of behavior is normalized. There's segregation in education, that's clear. Because our neighborhoods are segregated, our student bodies are not diverse, our faculty and diversity administration is not diverse, so learning about people from different cultures and ethnic backgrounds will not occur organically here. In our community, diversity education will take a valiant, consistent, and professional effort. So it will take more than just randomly redistributing responsibilities, it will take more than a 90-day Unity Day for the year. And finally, for every child and family that's been hurt by the ignorance of others, I want to say, "We're here for you." And for the sake of human decency, incidents should be handled with more support and compassion for the actual victims. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Mike Wasserman. I've now attended the last two board meetings, and I want to commend you for your time, your effort, and your stamina. I know you must only be doing this job because you care about our town, the school district, and its children. So I wish this meeting did not feel so adversarial because I believe at the highest level, we have the same priorities. However, what feels like the difference from people down here and the people up there is the sense of urgency on this topic. In my five-plus hours of service as a school board meeting attendee, I've noticed a genuine commitment to physical safety and security of our students. You didn't create that security risk, and you can't solve the ills of our society. Yet you have spared no resources to protect our children physically. There is a sense of urgency and an unambiguous indication of priorities to make sure we do everything in our power that none of our children get hurt at school. A community police officer on site, visible signs of protection, deterrent measures, and behind-the-scenes work that are always being refined, even bond votes for additional resources. Well, guess what? In this community, thank God, we have not had any serious safety incidents from outsiders. Yet we have had many incidents of children who have harmed themselves and worse due to the stress, anxiety, and lack of belonging. You have heard from scores of your students who are suffering. The emotional and social well-being of our children is also a safety issue for this district. What is the larger message you are hearing from these children? They don't feel seen, they don't feel heard, and they don't feel safe. Why is a DEI director not as essential as a community police officer? If that officer quit in the middle of the school year, would we revisit the position? Allocate the responsibilities to multiple people on a part-time basis? Or find a replacement as soon as possible to have a visible symbol of our commitment to this mission? I ask you to take the same perspective here for the protection of our children as I know you believe in and as I know you do elsewhere. Thank you.
Okay, sorry. Again, impossible for me to see. At this point, the board could discuss or have any commentary related to the comments made. I will just say something brief and let people add if they wish. There were many comments made here tonight, many of them sad and heartbreaking, and it hurts my heart to see our students in pain. I am sorry for your pain, and I want to reiterate that every single person up here - I think I can speak for them - is committed to lessening that pain, and we are fully committed to furthering our DEI work and doing it well, and making sure that the right persons or people lead it and lead it properly. That work is ongoing, and everyone up here is committed to it. That being said, I also feel it's imperative upon me, as the president of this board, to also say that there are statements made tonight regarding the incident that Ms. Chen has referenced that are incomplete and incorrect and misguided, and for purposes of confidentiality and privacy rights of various individuals, I cannot and would not divulge that - those details. The only thing I could state at this time is I think it's very important that the community know that this incident, albeit very disturbing, did not take place in a school building and was actually not a school district-related incident, and I just think it's very important for people to know. I'm not talking about what followed, I am not talking about any of that. I just think that there is some information here that people are not aware of, and I just want to make that clear, that this was not something that took place in our building. It was technically not an incident in one of our schools. So it's very important that I say that in the event that anyone doesn't understand that. That's all that I will say at this point, except, again, to apologize for the hurt that these students conveyed. It's real, and we see it, and we feel it, and we'd like to put a stop to it, and that's what we are- And that's what we are trying to do up here. And that's all I will say. If anyone else wants to make a comment, you are free to say anything.
Listen, I'm responsible for what happens in this district. And so every statement, every student experience shared tonight, it's my job to work with the people who work with you to make sure that the environment that you are learning in is safe. And I heard many of our children share that it's just simply not safe. And so I take that very seriously. And listen, we have been engaged in a significant amount of DEI work in this district for the past three years. But our students aren't feeling it. Students here aren't feeling it, and we need to think about that. And we need to make some adjustments. I feel our process to move forward, to figure out how to reshape that DEI position, is the right process, even though I hear disagreement about that from those of you who are here, and I understand it. I really do. But I want to make sure that we structure that position in a way that it meets our current needs. And so having multiple constituent groups around the table to help guide us in that conversation with insight, I think is the best thing to do for this district at this time. And I also, I know that there is advocacy and frustration in the audience, and I appreciate that. But I also want you to know that, you know, we put, I put pressure on myself to do the job that our students deserve here each day in this district. And I recognize very clearly we are not meeting needs. And I heard comments about recognition and the calendar, and I heard comments about reporting and support and people feeling unsupported. And we take that, I take that very seriously. There are complications associated with a lot of what was talked about, with the calendar, with incidents, where they happen, how we handle them. But none of that really matters right now. I think what matters is people in this room who go to this school are not feeling good about that. And what am I, and what is my team going to do about it? And I appreciate that, and we are going to work on that. And, you know, I'm sorry. I'm sorry that kids feel like they need to come here and be advocates for themselves in this way. And I'm going to keep working to do better. And I'm sorry that doesn't feel like it's enough. But that's what I feel like I need to say right now.
Okay? Thank you, Christine. All right, we're going to walk, move ahead to item three, approvals and ratifications. I, did you, I'm sorry? Did you want to say something? Okay. We're going to take, can I have a motion to take a five-minute bathroom break? Warren, second. Hillary, all in favor? All right, we will be back in five minutes. All right, I will move to reopen the meeting. Can I have a second? All in favor? Okay, thank you, everyone, for your patience. We are moving on to item number three, approvals and ratifications. I'd like to take 3.1 through 3.3 together. That is accepting the minutes of the November 16th, 2022 Board of Ed meeting, the November 30th, Special Board of Ed meeting, and the minutes of the December 7th, Special Board of Education meeting. So can I have a motion for 3.1 through 3.3? Anybody? Okay, thank you, Hillary. Can I have a second? Okay, Ryan, any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, items 3.4 and 3.5. This is first reading and adoption of changes to Board Policies 5080 and 5049. These are our Title IX sexual harassment policies for employees. It is, as Christine mentioned, a name change. But first, can I have a motion for 3.4 and 3.5?
I move.
I'll second. Questions or comments? Does anyone just want to mention? It was mentioned briefly. That is just a change of name. Since Philip is no longer with us, it's just a replacement, correct, of Josh Block?
And we're waiving the second reading.
Yes, we are waiving the second reading. So this is a simple changeover. So all in favor of adopting 3.4 and 3.5?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, on to 3.6. Policy 4055, school-sponsored field trips. This is a first reading. Can I have a motion for item 3.6?
I have 3.6.
Second. Questions, comments? Maybe someone on policy can mention?
Sure. So this is just a minor change to the policy which previously had the board needing to approve any overnight field trips whatsoever. And in discussion with Dr. Ackerman, that didn't make sort of practicable sense in the sense that there are a number of, primarily sports, but other like Model UN debate that may go for a night or two nights in the matter, of course, of just their, you know, their club or their sport activities. So anything that was in excess of three nights is out of the norm and out of sort of the routine of going to a debate tournament or going to a football retreat. So we thought that that was a logical sort of time designation beyond which the board should have approval over it.
For three days.
But anything shorter than that for, to just have superintendent approval seemed appropriate.
Okay, that makes sense. All right. So all in favor of this first reading, and then we'll finalize it next time, 3.6? All in favor? Okay.
I recommend 4.1 instructional as presented.
I'll move 4.1. Can I have a second?
I'll second.
Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Just want to recognize we have some retirees on this agenda. Normally in December, we have administrators and teachers letting us know if they plan on retiring. So we'll honor Carol, Steve, Beth, and Tom in June at our ceremony. But congratulations to them.
I know, congratulations. We'll miss them.
I recommend 4.2 non-instructional as presented.
I'll second. Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're on item number five, which is our consent agenda. The consent agenda permits the board to make more effective use of its time by adopting in a single motion relatively routine matters. We are at 5.1 through, I'm sorry, I'm working on a written copy, 5.16. This involves various bid awards, the Instagram mentioned before, changes in purchase orders, some budgeting transfers, et cetera. Can I make, first of all, can I ask if anyone wants to?
I move.
Move any, pull anything out of the consent agenda? No? Okay, so I'd like to move the consent agenda, which is 5.1 through 5.16. Warren moved?
I'll move.
I'll second, sorry for the confusion. Any questions or comments on any of the items? All in favor?
Aye.
That brings us to item six. Be it resolved, the Board of Education acknowledges the following contracts that were already approved by the superintendent pursuant to Board Policy 6085. This is 6.1, a contract with Musical Theater International for Mean Girls royalties. So that will be a spring production. Can I have a motion acknowledging 6.1? Ryan, can I have a second?
I'll second.
Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
We already talked about facilities. Financials. Tonight, we have 8.1 through 8.7. I'd like to take them all together. This is acknowledgement of receipt of the Claims Otters Report for October of '22, the Revenue Status Report for October of '22, the Appropriations Status Report of October '22, and the Treasurers Report for October '22, and also the Revenue Status Report for November, the Appropriations Status Report for November, and the Treasurers Report for November. So that's six, that's, I'm sorry, that's 8.1 through 8.7. Can I have a motion to approve those? Or acknowledge receipt, excuse me. I'll move. I'll second. Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Notice of future meetings. Our next meeting will be after the New Year